All right, good morning. It is 10:00 AM. We are...
It's 9:59.
Well, I got 10:00 up there and 9:59 over there. So, we can wait one minute if everybody would like.
I have 9:59 on my clock.
Okay. Well, our 1:00 clock is telling us wrong. I apologize. Well, wait. Well, 9:59, okay. All right. We'll wait just a second here. Just waiting for the clocks to change. There it is. Now it's 10:00. Now we're going. Thank you, Kitchie. Appreciate it. All right. So, I will call to order the regular meeting of the Washington County Commissioner, Board of Commissioners for June 27, 2017. This time, Mr. Garth Elliott, would you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, sir?
If I get out. Join with me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, in the name of liberty, justice, and all.
That. All right. Madam Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
Certainly. Bob Lucy, Chair.
Here.
Marcia Burke Bigler, Vice Chair.
Here.
Kitty Jung.
Present.
Von Hartung.
Here.
Janie Herman.
Here.
Assistant County Manager Kevin Schiller.
Here.
Assistant District Attorney Paul Leparelli.
Here.
I'm Nancy Parent, County Clerk. You have a quorum, Mr. Chair.
All right. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before we get into public comment, I do want to point out that we have our illustrious Assistant County Manager Kevin Schiller running the meeting for us this morning and is going to be taking over some duties as his last official day here with on the dais with us. So, Mr. Schiller, will you lead us into public comments, sir?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items. With comment limited to three minutes per person, comments are being made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. Schiller. All right. I have quite a few individuals signed in this morning. I'll call a couple of names and then we'll have you queue up behind the person in front of you. First, I have Mr. Roger Edwards, then followed by Mr. Ray Lake. Good morning, Mr. Edwards.
Morning, Commissioners. Roger Edwards, for the record. A Golden Valley resident, 20-plus years, I don't know exactly. I'm going to talk kind of in general, but your Item 24 on your agenda is kind of upsetting to me. I'm an eight-year, you know, termed-out Planning Commissioner. I've had many years on the cab, many years as a homeowners association, and other public service jobs. But I can't believe that anybody on this board doesn't understand and fully appreciate the expansion that's going on in Washoe County. Everywhere, and you don't have to look, I mean, everywhere you're confronted with traffic problems, construction, roadwork, all kinds of things, cranes everywhere. It's exciting time. But it's not a time, excuse me, not a time to be cutting public comment into the county for you guys to do your job. As a Planning Commissioner, I wouldn't make any decision about a project until I heard from staff about what they heard from cabs and NABs and homeowners associations or anything else that might have been related. And now your new, this process is talking about cutting, grouping, organizing, and a bunch of other stuff that just looks to me, and I read all of the options, looks to me like it's just a way to minimize the public's involvement with decision-making process for the county. And there can't be very many things that you guys should be more opposed to than that. I'm totally opposed to cutting any cab representation, and we need to expand cabs out to the north area like crazy. Everybody knows it. They're looking at so many new homes in Spanish Springs and all the way out to the lake. And Gerlach is not expanding nearly like we are here close, but, you know, their voice needs to be heard as much as anybody else's. And this is a minimal expense compared to a football stadium or some other nonsense that we vote on all the time. So, let's keep our priorities right about keeping the public's voice into our decision-making process, not limiting it or modifying it or reducing it. That's all I got. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Edwards. Next, Mr. Ray Lake, followed by Mr. Peewee Henson.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. For the record, my name is Ray Lake. I am Chairman of the North Valleys Cab. And I've reviewed the recommendations that have been put forth regarding the cabs, and I agree with one thing, and that is that we need monthly meetings. We have not had as many development projects as...
Sorry, Mr. Lake. Can I...
(phone rings) He's double-dogged. Wow.
I'm timed out.
There you go.
There you go.
(inaudible).
Sorry, Mr. Lake. I apologize.
It's okay. Thank you. We have not had a lot of development projects, and we've had some meetings canceled. When the flavor of the cabs changed a couple of years ago, the attendance started to drop because we weren't doing things that were interesting to our neighbors. They will come out to a cab meeting, and they will talk about the Sted Airport, they'll talk about flooding at Swan Lake, and waste management, the Highway Department, but they won't come out to a cab meeting just because the doors are open. And to combine the four cabs in the North Valleys into one North Valleys cab, I think, is just ludicrous. In the North Valleys cab, we have Sted Airport, we have Swan Lake, we have the city of Reno that's annexing territory as fast as they can. They have over 17,000 dwelling units in various stages of approval right now. We have warehousing, we have the traffic on the I-395 corridor that's exacerbated by the building that's going on there. Those are all things that the North Valleys cab is interested in. The folks in Gerlach or Warm Springs, they have no interest in that, and we frankly don't know what goes on in their areas. So, to sum it up, we need to have monthly meetings, we need to have agendas that are interesting to our constituents, and we need to maybe expand the cabs rather than combine them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Lake. Next, I have Mr. Peewee Henson, followed by Ms. Carol Burns.
My fall off? Grab my door. Morning, everybody. For the record, Peewee Henson. Most of the folks back behind me probably don't know why I'm here, but I know you know why I'm here. About a year ago, we had a discussion about open lands used for shooting. Well, I have no problem sharing those open lands, but what we were looking for was just a couple of signs that says shooting occurs in these areas. Be aware. What's turned into, in my perception, is an attempt to re-regulate and reassign new boundaries to where we can do what we do. Sharing has become, how do you want to say, disregarded. My perception is you guys want to take over everybody's personal responsibility. Now, just because somebody has a driver's license does not make them a great driver. Just because somebody has a gun and goes out shooting doesn't make them a smart shooter. Those are the people you need to address. Cutting off the shooting areas for everybody does not work. I know from Janie Herman there's funds available to make those signs and place them. I hear from the grapevine that your man Dave Solaro is sitting on the money, waiting for more money, to put in these giant kiosks that re-regulates the whole mountain with boundaries. Why? You cannot regulate personal responsibility. If somebody's stupid enough to walk into a gunfight, then that's their problem. I know you cannot ask questions, but I'm going to stand here for another minute or so, watch you watch me, and maybe something else will come to my mind. Stare at him.
Stare.
No, it's not a psych job. It's, you know, I'm really disappointed in the effectiveness of your work. You know, we're hovering near disappointment, frustration, and frankly, trust. You want to know what we think and what we think will work for us? We can't trust you to get it done. Somehow you guys got something else you'd rather do, or turn it over to somebody else to build job security so that you can say, "We're still working on it." Get it done! Have a nice day.
Thank you, Mr. Henson. Next, I have Ms. Carol Burns, followed by Ms. Vicki Maltman. Good morning, Ms. Burns.
My name is Carol Burns, excuse me, and I'm a resident of Washoe Valley. I'd like to take this opportunity to thank the Truckee Meadows Fire District for our cleanup last Saturday. Mike Ryder and I from the cab, there were KTMB team, Bert and Renee from the code enforcement were there, and last but not least, Maureen O'Reilly, or, excuse me, O'Brien, from the Fire Protection Administrative Office. I want to thank her in particular for all her work. She is one of the best county employees I have ever had the opportunity to work with. She always answers the phone, which I thought was a great plus in her behalf, but we had quite a good turnout, and we really appreciated the opportunity to lessen some of our fire danger in Sun Valley. The other item I wanted to mention, and I'm sorry to disagree with Mr. Henson, but I think that the Washoe County Commission should adopt emergency ordinance prohibiting all the outdoor target shooting at this point in time. It seems like every fire that we've had started is because of shooting. And I think, you know, there's a beautiful range up Pyramid Highway. I have used it a number of times myself, and it's not that expensive that people couldn't go out there and shoot if they so desire. But I really think that you ought to take some action on this before we have more and more fires. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. Next, I have Ms. Vicki Maltman, followed by Ms. Tammy Holtstill. Good morning, Ms. Maltman.
Good morning. You get to hear from all your favorite people right off the bat. I just love it. I do want to, before I start my dissertation, thank Commissioner Kitty Jung for keeping her word, replying to the emails I've sent her, which hasn't been the case with all Commissioners, and actually coming out to my home to see what the problems were from the flooding. So, thank you, Ms. Jung. What does Washoe County do for citizens of Sun Valley? They mostly ignore, which is a verb, refuse to take notice or acknowledge, disregard intentionally. Synonyms are disregard, take no notice of, pay no attention to, pay no heed to, turn a blind eye to, turn a deaf ear to, tune out, snub, slight, burn, shun, disdain, look right through, fail to consider something significant. We're discriminated against when you consider that Mr. Lucy's district is one, District One has 12 cab meetings a year, and we're lucky to get four. Our last meeting was summarily discharged by those that believe we are irrelevant and unnecessary. These staff members do not appreciate nor care to hear from volunteers or residents that live in Sun Valley, and I am sure this applies to most of Commission District Five. If you don't live in the ritzy part of town, or don't have funds to line someone's pockets, you don't matter. It appears from the actions of staff and you Commissioners that you only want to command us, not listen to us. It appears you want to remove our First Amendment rights. Studies have shown that citizen advisory boards have become a staple of our democracy nationwide. They increase the deliberativeness of our governments by engaging volunteer citizens and allowing them to be part of the political and governmental process that occurs in our local community. This serves to overcome citizen apathy by crafting lively and engaging participation programs. They allow for in-depth examination of issues and are an excellent resource for local governments to use when they're willing to care or to listen. Washoe County does not appear to have that feeling. You put up words like communication and integrity. What you are trying to do here shows your belief you don't believe in either of these words. You Commissioners are elected to work for us, not staff, and not the people that are employed by the county. I'm kind of getting tired as there are a lot of people in our area. Sorry?
Thank you, Ms. Maltman. Next, I have Ms. Tammy Holtstill, followed by Ms. Tracy Hall.
Good morning, Commissioners. Tammy Holtstill for the record, and still here. Last Wednesday, we had a conference call. Washoe County Representative Wood, the only thing was stated constantly for the record was to the state of Nevada, federal agencies, and Flood Forum USA and Lemon Valley Recovery Committee, is that the Lemon Valley residents needed an education. So, I'm going to give you a little bit of an education today. Let's see. Do you realize that there's only 27 weeks left till Christmas? What does that mean? That means more rain and more snow. So, yeah, 27 more weeks. Swan Lake is a closed basin. Water does not leave our little lake. And Military Road's still putting water in from both the sewer plant and somehow from Silver Lake. I also have the, there was a grant that is being proposed by Michelle Montoya from the Silver Service, or Community Services Agency, and she's stated in her proposal that she's concerned that the Washoe County Consortium is not going to back her proposal to assist the residents in do the distribution of the funds. I am asking that Washoe County take an active role and support this proposal for the residents out here in Lemon Valley. Tiger dams. We had a representative out last week to show us what tiger dams are about. I understand that one of your representatives had a meeting with her, and you guys were interested in them, and you even had a proposal regarding what the cost would be for these tiger dams. They would be perfect for Shane and Pompey to assist those residents to get out of water. And they are deployed in water, which is really interesting. Also, during that meeting, we found out that one of your developers out there in Washoe County that was above, in front of this board, has decided that they are going to purchase something like the tiger dams and put it up, and I am concerned that you guys are not knowing about it, and that maybe you need to be concerned about it, because if he installs these, is he putting it in the right place not to affect the Lemon Valley Drive residents and the additional Pompey and Shane residents with the water being pushed back from Lemon Drive? He wants to evaporate the water off of his property, but to do that, he's got to stop water from coming on. So, you guys have not opened Lemon Drive because of the fact that the water is being displaced there. The Flood Forum USA, we have been approved for a hydraligist pro bono. Harriet has also talked about the, to have an effective mitigation plan, that we need to have a residence-based steering committee to have an effective mitigation plan for that valley. Also, she stated the best education is communication.
Thank you, Ms. Holtstill.
For the record, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Holtstill gave me a handout, which I'll distribute to the board and place on the record.
Thank you. Ms. Tracy Hall, followed by Ms. Catherine Snedeker.
Good morning. I was here at the last meeting, and I had brought some pictures of my yard. I live in Lemon Valley, by the way. My name's Tracy Hall. And these pictures, if I can please put them up, were taken last night.
Yep. We'll get you on the overhead. Right there on that one. There you go.
As you can see, this is still very much my life. The water is starting to go down a bit, but the pictures, you can see, that is my yard. That is my garden, okay? That's about two feet of water right there. As you can go on, that's the side yard, right alongside my home. That is my backyard, where my chickens used to live. They're not ducks. They can't swim. That's another picture of one of my gardens. I don't think anything's going to grow there. As a matter of fact, I'm losing fruit trees as we speak. That is the side of my house, right there. My whole 10 acres is pretty much still underwater. Nothing seems to be getting better. And once that water does go down, which I don't believe it will before winter, my septic's going to need to have time to dry out, and it's not going to happen. We really need you guys to figure out something to do with that lake, so maybe we, in maybe a year or so, maybe rebuild our lives out there. Also, I need you guys to know that I have a little neighbor that has been diagnosed with PTSD. He's five years old. He's having nightmares. He's having anxiety over that water, because he can't swim. So, now he's in therapy. This is a family that goes week to week on paychecks, and here they are now paying for therapy for their five-year-old son, PTSD. I find that just heartbreaking, and I would like to think you guys would find that a little heartbreaking as well. It just breaks my heart that we don't see anything being done out there to help us figure out what we're going to do with this lake. These are our homes, our lives. I would also like to point out, I want to say thank you, because I was here at the last meeting, said August 31st, we were homeless again because temporary housing was going to have no longer funding that. That day, I spoke with Amber Howley, which is an amazing woman. Thank you, Amber. She's been great to us, and we have gotten extended housing, so I want to thank you for that. We appreciate that. But if you guys can do something like that, why can't we figure out something for us so you wouldn't have to put us up in temporary housing anymore? So, we can go home and live our lives, like you guys get to go home, and be in your own home, your own four walls? That's all we're asking for us, too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Next, Ms. Catherine Snedeker, followed by Mr. Garth Elliott.
For the record, my name is Catherine Snedeker, a non-person, non-resident, non-infranchised natural woman. Mr. Lucy, I had a conversation with my Commissioner, and through you, I would like to educate Commissioner Jung and Commissioner Burke Bigler as to why I was so upset during my public comments last time. Apparently, they have some intellectual disability to not be able to understand, "There is no fire truck where I live." There's more than 1,200 residents in Palomino Valley. The only place development exists in Warm Springs Valley. There's no fire truck. I'm paying for fire service. I don't get any. It's like if you went out to dinner at Texas Roadhouse. You order a great ribeye steak and a baked potato loaded, smothered in mushrooms and onions, nice Caesar salad. It's all ready to come to you, and they give it to the table next to you, and they give you the bill. That's what we are experiencing as far as fire service. Now, I don't know, maybe it affects your audit, to show the only unmanned fire station in all of Washoe County. You should be proud of that. You must be. You have no reaction to we don't have fire protection. You have no reaction to we don't have a fire truck. None. It's like, oh, well. So, that's why I was very upset last time, and I'm still upset this time, because nothing is being done. In Lemon Valley, they got so much water, they can't get rid of it. We live in a matchstick, and there's nothing there to protect us. But you have no problem charging us for fire service on our taxes, and I want that money back. We don't have volunteer firefighters out there. I understand that now. We have fire helpers, but there's no truck. There's no water truck. Do you understand that when brush burns, you need to put it out with water, and there's not always a hydrant close by, and you have to have a water truck to come and put it out? Can you comprehend that? Any of you? Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snedeker. Next is Mr. Garth Elliott, followed by Ms. Donna Clontz.
Excuse me, I think I'm still drilling over Catherine's ribeye. For the record, Garth Elliott. Commissioners, friends, and I count all of you as friends, so let's, I'm going to make sure it stays friendly. I, too, am here over the proposals on the cabs. Let's do a little bit of history. Sun Valley has had a cab since the '70s. Do the math. That's almost 50 years. Long time. It never once was based on development, like it's being attempted now. And yes, we had more than 11 people show up. In fact, I filled it up one time, only because they wanted to string me up when I proposed dealing with horses in Sun Valley. It was filled up, standing room only. Very, very well-attended cab. What is going on? Why are we readdressing the cabs again? I thought it was a done deal, and I think I know who to blame, and I'm not pointing any fingers. 24,000 people in Sun Valley. Come on, give us a break. Give us a word to our Commissioners, two of them. Stop trying to take it away from us. That's all we ask. That's all I ask. Again, we've had them since the '70s. Very well-attended, not the 11 that is counted on now. A lot more. The reason why it is only 11 is because the area's lost, I think, lost, what's the word for it? They don't think that cabs are really there to help anymore. I think they've lost interest because the county seems to have withdrawn their support, which I have to agree they have. We need to stop addressing it. We need to maybe not hire one more person, like you've been dragging through here for the last year, all these dozens, dozens, or hundreds of employees to pick back up where we were. Well, give us the cabs like we were in 2007, 2008. Give it back to us. Don't stop readdressing us. We don't need to be readdressing it. We need to, like Reno and Sparks, if you've been to their meetings, they embellish their cabs as much as they can. They enjoy their cabs or NABs they have. There's not a meeting goes by, I think, when they're extolling the virtues of their NABs, not like the county. Please, let's readdress what we're doing. Let's reevaluate the value of them. They're a huge forum for your constituents to talk to you, so why on earth would you be trying to get rid of it? It doesn't make any sense. Please don't combine us, listen to us, and reinstate our cabs like the former cabs that we've had. Please, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Next, I have Ms. Donna Clontz, followed by Ms. Lyndon Nelson.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Donna Clontz. I'm on your senior citizen advisory committee, and later in your agenda, you have Item 25, which is the first reading for the ordinance amending the Washoe County Code, Chapter 45, that creates the Human Services Division, and our senior advisory board is part of that ordinance. We really, I'm here representing Larry Weiss, who's our chair, who's out of the country right now, and the rest of our members. Worked very closely with, especially with Amber Howley. We want to thank her for the time she put in personally to sit with us and address the concerns about the recreation or the changing of the NAB, of the senior advisory committee. And it's, in the code, it is left as it has been for many years, with Representatives from each district, with folks that have some expertise in the senior field, with some representation by elected officials such as yourselves on that board to kind of help us steer on main policy decision-making. So, we're very happy with the way the wording has come out. We're in support of the wording that's there and looking forward to having it come to second reading. So, thank you again for the work, and thank you again for letting us give you our viewpoints on our senior citizens.
Thank you, Ms. Clontz. Next, I have Ms. Lyndon Nelson. Good morning, Ms. Nelson.
Good morning. My name is Lyndon Nelson. I'm the Natural Resource Specialist with the Nevada Land Trust and the One Truckee River Project. Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the Commission. Happy to be here today. My colleague, Kristi Chekawuru, is also going to be speaking. We wanted to provide you an update to... We wanted to provide you an update today on the One Truckie River Project that this board adopted in September of 2016. We will be providing quarterly updates to you under public comment. And we also have some swag bags for you today to... It has our newsletter, which we've started, and a bumper sticker. So wanted to thank you again for your support. In particular, I am going to talk today about our four outstanding AmeriCorps students that have spent 10 months with us on the One Truckie River Project. And I only have three of them here today. But with me is Nick Mazoni, right here, Nick, Meg Parker, and Emily Ulrich. The missing person is Chessie Poyen. Together, they have been with us since last August and have spent 10 months with us. They are going off of payroll, if you can call it that, with AmeriCorps, August 11th. So we wanted to recognize them with you all today and thank them for their work. But they have put in 6,800 hours on the One Truckie River Project, and I will elaborate a little bit on specifics in terms of what they've provided for us on this project. The AmeriCorps program, if you aren't familiar with it, is obviously a national program through the Corporation for National and Community Services and engages more than 80,000 Americans in intensive service each year. As I've said, we got, I think, four of the best in our program. They have stayed there full-term. And I'd like to recognize Nick for his work. He put together an entire Truckie River watershed survey where over 1,200 people responded. Hopefully, some of you took that survey. He created it, he edited it, and then he got the University of Nevada on board, Fred Steinem, to do the analysis on it so that we can better understand what residents of our community know about the Truckie River watershed. He also was invaluable in putting us together with the Reno River Festival, where we were able to do a lot of outreach and community engagement, as well as other things. So those are some of the main areas that Nick's been working on. With Emily Ulrich, Emily is an outstanding GIS, Geographic Information Systems Specialist mapper. She worked with Marcia Cardnell, our staff member, doing all of the baseline mapping on the Truckie River, 12-mile section of the Truckie River. So she has been doing that, and I want to thank her for all of her work on that. And then Meg Parker is doing a watershed education plan, as well as a teacher resource guide. Emily is also doing a teacher resource guide. And I want to thank them for that work, plus all of their future endeavors. Thanks so much.
Thank you, Ms. Nelson. Next, I have Ms. Kristi... You're going to have to help me.
Kristi, thanks. Thank you, yes. I'm Kristi Chakarulu, the Executive Director of Keep Truckie Meadows Beautiful. And I am here with Linda Nelson in partnership, again, for the One Truckie River Initiative. I just want to thank you all for unanimously approving this project back in September. And as we had promised at that time, we would come back and provide regularly, regular updates, which is what we're doing now. I can share with you that this plan is continuing to move forward with over 130 stakeholders helping to make things happen. In addition to the river being mapped, as Linda just mentioned, we have just placed mile markers. We started placing mile markers along the river and along the bike path. We've worked in partnership with Sparks and Reno Fire Departments. These exist for safety first, giving first responders and water entry teams specifically a point of reference from which to quickly plan and execute a swift water rescue. This also includes a secondary purpose as far as serving as reference points for allowing people to use the path for health and recreation purposes. We will be ready to finish the Spark section following the flood-related repairs and resurfacing and once temperatures cool down a bit. Also, the Nevada Department of Wildlife has placed life jacket stations at two points along the river to boost safety for children, particularly playing in and along the river. We have, as Linda mentioned, completed a survey of over 1,000 stakeholders in the Truckie Meadows to find out what they know and don't know about the Truckie River so we can better educate the community. Tamwa is working to install porta potties in Fisherman's Park, which, as many of you know, along the river, this is a really big deal. We're very excited about this. And we're also looking at a long-term structure for One Truckie River to ensure the ongoing success of this program and also to continue the implementation pieces for this program. We will be moving forward with planning for Phase Two, which is downstream from Vista to Pyramid Lake, which we've secured some additional funding to match the Truckie River funds that we've received to keep this program moving forward. And so I also want to call your attention to The Current, which is a quarterly update that we just sent out a month ago, and which is also included in this swag bag that we'll be passing out to you right now. So on a last note, I would really like to commend your Washoe County caseworkers who have been doing a phenomenal job helping people along the river. This is something that Sheila Leslie, one of Washoe County's representatives, who's been working with us along this initiative, she's helped to make happen, she's secured funds to get caseworkers out there along the river, and this has made a tremendous difference. So thank you all so much.
Thank you. Next, I have Ms. Elizabeth Gambrill.
Good morning. I'm Elizabeth Gambrill, and I'm here about item number 24, the redistribution changes, modifications to the cabs. I've just started working with the cabs in Gerlach last year when they reinstated it. And in the months up to reinstating the cab for Gerlach, all I heard from other residents in Gerlach was that it was a waste of our time. We really didn't need to do it because the county commission wouldn't do anything for us anyway. I have found that not to be fully true. We have had some successes out in Gerlach with information we've passed through our cabs. I'm not looking for 100% success rate. I am looking for some, and we've gotten some of that. This move, though, takes me back to an entirely flat level because we are one of the largest districts... Actually, we are the largest district in Washoe County. We're over 89% of your landmass. And currently, you have four cabs representing 89% of your landmass. That's less than one for every 1,000 miles. 1,000 miles. So people who want to attend a cab in District 5 have got to drive a long way to get to one. If you're going to redistribute, maybe think about the ones who can make it to this building in 20 or 30 minutes, not two or three hours or four hours out of their day. So when you're talking about District 5, please consider how large we are. We may not have a high-density population, but we have a lot of natural resources. We have a lot of passionate people. We have a lot of interest. Development is different out there. We're not building malls. We're not building Tesla factories. We are building communities, and the cabs are important to those. So I do know about the district forums. They are a less formal method, and it has some viability. But our cabs are our one true link to our county commissioners for everybody in our district. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no further public comments signed in at this time, we will close public comment, bring it back to the board. At this time, Mr. Manager, we're on to item four.
Chairman, item four is Commissioner's County Manager's announcements, reports and updates, requests for information or topics for future agendas. No discussion among commissioners will take place on this item.
All right. I have Commissioner Jung signed in. Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do agree with Ms. Burns. And this was brought up at last week's meeting as well, during our fire meeting. I would like legal to look into an emergency moratorium on target shooting throughout the unincorporated county like it is in the cities. And as a give-back to the shooters, because I do understand there are good target shooters and bad target shooters, but I'd rather just have everybody stop target shooting right now. And instead, why don't we open up free shooting at our county facility way out in Commissioner Herman's district but off of Pyramid Highway? Because I know it's quite a trek to come out there. So that would pay for at least your gas, right? And that we could then, you know, the stick and the carrot with that. And then, let's ask the sheriff's deputies and department and citizens who are aware and out and about on the trails to report people that are illegally shooting, so that these people will be arrested. And then that will communicate to the rest of their colleagues that we are not going to put up with that. So that's my first request.
I do want to know an update. It was alleged that a developer is displacing water out in Lemon Valley. I want to know if we have, do we permit it? Are we on top of it? What is really going on there? Because it is true, that water should not be moved around unless it's a hydrologist and engineer expert at those issues. And then, I know she left. Linda Nelson is a retiree from our Parks District. And I just, it always astonishes me because Doug Doolittle, who was the Parks Director, he's now on our Regional Parks and Open Space Commission, heavily influenced with parks and such. And then Linda Nelson, in her capacity and her retirement, is also giving back. So it feels like once a public servant, always a public servant. That's why I love working with public servants, because there is that community responsibility. So I know they're not here right now, but I just want, hats off to them. I think we are so lucky that our retirees also continue to be servants to the public in which pay their retirement. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'll start with the fact that you and I attended the Washoe County Sheriff's Office NSA, which is the National Sheriff's Association Conference yesterday for a short time. Very well-attended by national sheriffs. Sheriffs from all over the nation. Great group. And it's a way for them to get together to talk about some of the issues that they have in common and how they have solved them. And I was impressed with how well-attended it was. I have an ask for staff. I see staff sitting in the audience. Mr. Smith, I'd like to ask for a presentation. I think this board will find it very, very useful, by Mr. Rick Warner. He gave the presentation to both Western Regional Water and a shorter presentation to Tamwa. And what it is, is we have a wonderful group of people here that's working on, that are working on some water quality issues. We have a young lady by the name of Lydia Perry, and she has two master's degrees. And we're looking at some emerging technologies as to how we can reuse and recycle water. And it's really, it's about a 10-minute presentation. I think it's well worth the board looking at it because it is the lifeblood of our future. And then I agree with Commissioner Jung. And I believe we all got the same email from the chief about the Forest Fire Management Officer from the Forest Service asking for a temporary ban on shooting. And it's specifically, here's the very difficult part. And this is something that we can have a conversation about when we get to the right point. But it's really the steel jacket bullets that are the problem. That's where the sparks come from. Lead does not have the same issue. So, and I don't know how you stop people from doing that unless we do an outreach to maybe some of the purveyors. And I'm not trying to call anybody out. In fact, I won't call out the sellers of ammunition. But maybe there's a way that we can work backwards through them to have, not a ban, but just a, perhaps it's a handout that goes with steel jacket shells to say, "Look, you know, these can spark fires, and it can be a real danger for the public safety." So I think your idea, Commissioner Jung, with giving free time at the range, that's a great idea. That's really thinking outside the box. And I agree that we need to have this conversation. I have some other things. Oh, and by the way, would like to hear from staff, Mr. Smith, and I don't see Mr. Solero, on where the signs are. What's happening with that? Did we, where's the hiccup? So let's, because I know we have some of the same issues in Spanish Springs. And by the way, just the final thing. I have not had an opportunity to call him back, but I have heard from tribal leaders about the same type of moratorium in and around Spanish Springs because they're terribly concerned. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Next, I have Commissioner Herman.
Right. I just wanted to thank everybody that came, spoke about the cabs. You did a, you brought out so many important points. And I don't think that a lot of people realize what a valuable asset cabs are. They can be made, you know, organized in a fashion to where they do what was, you know, looked at when they originally made the NRS, which was very plain. It was for that, as an advisory board. That means you bring from the rurals or wherever you are that information to the county. The county then can use that information, which is just invaluable information, that would save the county a lot of taxpayer dollars because this work is being done by the public, the public who knows their own communities the best, who know their own communities the best. So thank you for being here. I really appreciate that. And I wanted to state that Ms. Stil, she is always speaking for a recovery group. And maybe she should be given five minutes instead of the three and other groups like that. We used to do that. And, okay. So I wanted to say something about the shooting thing. And as far as the signs go, I mean, we do need to get that done. And Commissioner Hartung is right about what causes a spark that would cause a fire. And I'm not sure that stopping all shooting is fair, but we'll have to come up with something during fire season. And it should be limited to fire season and not just duck in there as a rule that'll go on and on. I'm kind of concerned about that. So there's a... There's been a lot of words from the park board and the park people that they weren't getting any money. Well, today, I think we're going to help that situation quite a bit along with that one $5 million donation that they got just a while back. So I think they're going to be elated after today. So I have had, like, over the last few months, quite a few calls from people and emails wondering how much it costs the park system to clean up after people's dogs. And so I bring that question out here. If anybody can get me that information, I'd sure appreciate it. So we went from good to bad. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. All right, seeing nothing further from any of the other commissioners, I have a couple of things, a couple of points that I'd like to point out this morning. First and foremost, you know, obviously, the NSA conference that was in town was very well-attended, as Commissioner Hartung had stated, that really enjoyed meeting with a lot of the sheriffs from across the country. We were very well-praised for our sheriff and his ability to run our sheriff's office. So a big, I want a great thank you to our sheriffs and all of our deputies and staff at the sheriff's office. From last Thursday through yesterday morning, I have received nothing but compliments and high accolades for our department and the, kind of the rolling of the red carpet, so to speak, for the sheriffs from across the country. We were also, we were also with the, you know, blessed with the presence of the Deputy Attorney General, U.S. Attorney General, Mr. Rutherford Steen, and Janet Piero, yesterday, Judge Janet Piero was there as well. Janine Panera, thank you. And she was with us at the opening session. Both were very, you know, wonderful speakers, talking about opioid epidemic here within the country and some of the challenges that we look forward to with the opioids and different things like that, and some of the challenges that our sheriffs and our sheriff's offices are seeing across the country. So some phenomenal information. We also were very, very honored to have Secretary Zinke was with us up at the lake yesterday with the attorney generals from across the country, with all the AGs. Our AG, Mr. Adam Laxalt, hosted all of the AGs up there for a national conference. One of the great things that came out of Mr. Zinke's visit to the state of Nevada was his reauthorization and support for the reauthorization of the PLIT program and supporting our public lands. Hopefully, we'll see that money. There will be, you know, 26 million... Hopefully, we'll see that money, there will be, you know, 26 million, roughly 26 million to come to Nevada if that reauthorization is to go through and the budget's in the future. So thank you, Secretary Zinke, for that as well. We really appreciate the help that does support us tremendously, and I think with some of our residents here from District Five, with a majority of our public, you know, 89% of our state being owned by the government, it's important that we have that support from the federal government. On to some other things. I would like to get an update on a Washoe Golf Course, operations at Washoe Golf Course. We are through the middle of our golf season. I know we have a new, our contractor that we extended a contract with. I do like to get an update from our staff on that and see where we are and how things are going, make sure that we're keeping up to date with those operations. That was one of our obligations to do so. So I'd like to see that. And then, that's all I have for right now. One thing I would like to do is make a statement, is that we're going to take the Agenda Item 30 a little bit out of order after our consent and block this morning, so, just to make that reference really quick. So seeing no further comments or from any of the commissioners, we will close that and move on to Agenda Five. Mr. Manager.
Chairman, Item Five is your consent agenda and consent items.
Thank you. Is there any items in the consent agenda that any commissioner would like to pull out or have further discussion on? Seeing none at this time? Looking for a motion? I have a motion from Commissioner Hartung, second from Commissioner Jung. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Please.
Yeah, mine came up. Sorry.
Commissioner Jung?
I forgot the vote, sorry.
We're waiting, we got it, all noted.
There you go.
All right. Please affirm your votes on the screens. Motion carries unanimously with five votes. We are on to Mr. and Mrs. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We'll do a block vote. I have a number of items that I'd like to put in a block vote. So I think we should put six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, and 21, and 23 in a block vote.
And 23, good. And if I may, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I have a question on number 10, and I'd like to pull item 11. I'd like to have just a deeper conversation and potentially give some direction to staff on item number 11.
Okay, so we'll pull 11 from the block? Is that okay?
Yes, the maker of the motion approves.
Thank you. All right.
And, Mr. Chair, if we could, after we do Mr. Schiller's, after we do the proclamation, perhaps we could hear item 24 first and do that straight away? I know there's a number of people here for the cabs.
No. Oh, for 24, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, we, 24, yeah, so we could do that.
No, you said 30.
I would do, I was gonna do, yeah, we could do.
31st, of course, yeah.
Yes.
Proclamation.
Right, we could do that, absolutely. So let's do that. So we'll take 11 out of the block. So I have a motion for a block vote of six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 12, 13, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, and 23. Do I have a second?
Second.
Oh, I have a second, I have a second by Commissioner Jung. So I will call for the vote. Well, I'll let Mr. Manager, Mr. Manager, can you read, please, please read those for me? Yeah.
Okay.
Chairman, Item Six is a recommendation to approve an interlocal cooperative agreement regarding November 2000 Parks Trails and Open Space Bonds, Golden Eagle Regional Park, Little League Parking Lot, WC1, $300,000 between Washoe County and the City of Sparks, effective June 27, 2017 through June 30, 2018, and authorize the Community Services Department Director to execute the agreement and all appropriate City of Sparks-related agreements and documents. Item Seven is a recommendation to approve an agreement for professional consulting services between Washoe County and TruePoint Solutions, commencing June 27, 2017 through June 30, 2018, to provide professional consulting services in support of the implementation of an asset management program, cost, approximate cost $331,000, $330,000. Recommendation to approve a bid and approve the agreement to the lowest responsible bidder for the Bowers Mansion Regional Park Playground Rehabilitation Project. Staff recommends Garden Shop Nursery Landscaping Division in the amount of $313,000, $450,000. Item Nine, recommendation to award a bid and approve the agreement to the lowest responsible bidder for the Whites Creek Park, Callahan Park, and Thomas Creek Park Playground Rehabilitation Project. Staff recommends Garden Shop Nursery Landscaping Division in the amount of $642,997.15, and if approved, direct the Comptroller's Office to make the appropriate budget adjustments. Item Ten, for possible action to approve a resolution to initiate an amendment to Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, Washoe County Development Code, Section 110.422.15, to remove the water rights dedication requirement for commercial, industrial, or civic uses in areas not served by the Truckee Meadows Water Authority. Item Twelve, recommendation to approve purchases of radio communication system equipment and microwave radio communication equipment through jointure with the National Association of State Procurement Officers, master price agreements with Harris Corporation, and sole source purchases from Alcatel, Lucen, Alphenol Antennas, Tesco Technologies, and D. the Spectra, and approve expenditures that will aggregate to exceed $100,000 but will remain within the available adopted budget funding during fiscal year 2017-18 for Washoe County Regional Communication System, not to exceed $1 million, with all expenditures requiring joint operation committee approval. Item Thirteen, recommendation to approve the FY 2017-2018 sole source purchases of Microsoft and Adobe licensing through jointure with the National Association of State Procurement Officers, master price agreement for software-valued added reseller SHI International, and recommend to approve expenditures that will aggregate to exceed $100,000 but will remain within the FY 2017-18 adopted budget, not to exceed $600,000. Item Fourteen, recommendation to approve FY 17-18 sole source purchases of computer network equipment, servers, data storage, personal computers, and printers through jointure with the National Association of State Procurement Officers, master price agreements for the state of Nevada with Dell Incorporated, and recommend to approve expenditures that will aggregate to exceed $100,000 but will remain within the FY 17-18 adopted budget, not to exceed $1.5 million. Item Fifteen, recommendation to approve the FY 17-18 sole source purchases of voice-over Internet protocol, VoIP hardware and software, and consulting implementation, maintenance, and support services from BCT Conference Inc. and recommend to approve expenditures that will aggregate to exceed $100,000 but will remain within FY 17-18 adopted budget, not to exceed $600,000. Item Sixteen, recommendation to approve the interlocal agreement between the County of Washoe Department of Juvenile Services and the Board of Regents of the Nevada System of Higher Education, University of Nevada Reno Department of Athletics, to continue the relationship in which UNR reimburses juvenile services for the cost of providing supervision for juveniles on the work program from July 1, 2017, for a four-year period. Item Seventeen, recommendation to approve acceptance of the Community Corrections Partnership Block Grant from the Department of Health and Human Services, Juvenile Justice Programs Office, in the amount of $322,462.22, to provide treatment and programming to youth referred to the Washoe County Department of Juvenile Services. The grant period, award period is July 1, 17 through June 30, 2018, no match required. If approved, direct the Comptroller's Office to make the necessary budget adjustments. Item Eighteen, recommendation to authorize the Comptroller to place the excess liability insurance policy with Plius Insurance Company for $189,202, effective July 1, 2017, with the funding from Risk Management Fund. Item Nineteen, recommendation to authorize the Comptroller to renew the excess workers' compensation or insurance policy with New York Marine and General Insurance Company for one year at a premium of $266,205, and the property insurance policy with the Public Entity Property Insurance Program for an annual cost of $487,121, effective July 1, 2017, funding from the Risk Management Fund source. Item Twenty, request by Washoe County District Attorney through the Washoe County Clerk pursuant to Washoe County Code 2.030, to direct the clerk to submit to the District Attorney requests for preparation of proposed ordinances which are made necessary by newer amended laws from the 79th Nevada 2017 Legislature. Item Twenty One, recommendation to approve a 2017 Emergency Management Performance Grant, letter of intent stating that the Nevada Division of Emergency Management is awarding $170,877 for FY 2017, retroactive from October 1, 2016 through March 31, 2018, requires $170,877 match, and allow the Comptroller's Office to make the appropriate budget adjustments. And Item Twenty Three, discussion of possible direction to the county manager to utilize two or more hours of staff time to initiate a review of a fire general improvement district.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. All right. Madam Clerk, do I have anybody signed in for public comment on any of these items?
I didn't see anyone in the system, Mr. Chair.
All right, thank you very much. All right, I'm gonna ask staff to come down for a further discussion on Item 10, so I'm gonna turn this over to Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Solero, what's, what's the reason for the amendment if Truckee Meadows isn't going to take this over? Truckee Meadows Water Authority isn't going to take this duty over?
For the record, Dave Solero, Director of the Community Services Department, through the chair to the Commissioner. So we've gotten a request that the actual dedication of the water rights is kind of a double duty. The state engineer takes care of this water. This is a kind of a leftover from when we were in the water business, where we would, you know, require a dedication of the water and then lease that water back to the purveyor. So there's been a request to remove that portion. You know, at the end of the day.
Who made the request?
It was, there was a gentleman out in Warm Springs, has a horse boarding facility, I believe, and we currently have a lease-back project with him. This came, I believe, through an attorney-client meeting with the board, and so this is the request of the board to go ahead and amend this section.
There'll be no, no liability on the board's part, will there?
No.
Okay.
No.
That's my main question. I wanted to make sure that we weren't going to be somehow held responsible.
No.
Okay, that's it, that's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. All right, seeing no further questions on the block vote, I do have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying yes. Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously, 5-0, with all commissioners voting this morning. All right. At this time, we are on to Agenda, we will take Agenda Item 24 at this time.
Let's do Item 30, so we can get that done.
Wow.
Is that okay? You said you wanted to do Item 30 first.
We'll do, we'll do 24 first.
Okay.
We'll do 24. We're good for managing time at this time, so we're gonna take it and we're gonna go, actually, no, we're gonna take, we're gonna go, we're gonna go in order here. We're gonna go back to Agenda 22. Item 22, please.
We have Item 11.
Do we have Item, oh, thank you. I forgot I took that out of the block. I apologize. This morning, I'm a little off-key. So we will go back to Item 11 for a further discussion at this time. So, Mr. Manager, if you want to take us into Item 11, please.
Chairman, Item 11, recommendation to approve the forensic support services agreements between Washoe County on behalf of Washoe County Sheriff's Office and various local law enforcement agencies, Board of Regents of the Nevada System of Higher Education, $18,016. Carlin PD, $7,622. Carson City Sheriff's Office, $127,910. Churchill County Sheriff's Office, $40,535. Douglas County Sheriff's Office, $104,940. Elko Police Department, $78,368. Elko County Sheriff, $73,448. Eureka County Sheriff's Office, $4,850. Fallon Police Department, $32,878. Humboldt County Sheriff's Office, $29,795. Landra County, $9,008. Love Lock Paiute Tribal PD, $3,000. Lyon County, $83,322. Mineral County, $7,657. Nevada Inspector General's Office, $13,962. Pershing County Sheriff's Office, $6,305. Sparks PD, $435,500. Story County, $29,726. Washoe County School Police Department, $20,718. West Windover PD, $22,173. Winamucca PD, $40,881. Urrington PD, $6,929, for forensic laboratory analysis service fees for the term of July 1, 2017 to June 30, 2018, with a total income of $1,197,543.
All right. We have, Commissioner Hartung, we have staff here for you, so.
Okay, so let me, let me tell you, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
So you'll notice here that we have a number of agencies from Washoe County, including the City of Sparks. I'd like to draw the commission's attention that the City of Reno is noticeably missing. And there is a huge disparity in the service that they are providing for us, which is dispatch, versus the service that we are providing for them, which is forensics. So I saw also, Ms. Schiller, I see that you're up here, and so Susan, tell me, are we, it says the scope of work does not include toxicology services. Will you explain that? I don't have a page number, I'm so sorry.
Good morning. Thank you, Susan Schilling, for the record. I'm going to, I'm not married to Kevin. I'm gonna defer to Carrie Heward, who is the Director of our Lab Services. She can explain the technical portion of that for you.
Great.
Thank you, Ms. Schilling.
Carrie Heward, for the record, I'm the Director of the Washoe County Sheriff's Office Forensic Science Division. The toxicology section was brought on at a later date, and there's an agreement that exists for the toxicology section, so that was brought on as a different budget and is operated separately from that. It's just a historical fact.
So, so, all of these agencies will be paying for toxicology separately?
That's correct.
Including the City of Reno?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. You're making me feel better. However, I know that the talks with respect to dispatch have stalled, and so I believe that we should give our county manager some direction to reach out, figure out what's going on with dispatch. The City of Reno doesn't seem to want to have a conversation about this. They've just, they just put it on the side. So if necessary, perhaps what we need to do is do our own dispatch, no different than the City of Sparks. And I don't, I don't want to have to take it that direction where we have three distinct dispatch units, but it would seem that we have, we have a problem here. And then, what I don't understand is, since we're trading forensics for dispatch, how does, is fire just included in that dispatch?
Sorry, Russ Peterson, for the record. Fire actually pays a separate contract for dispatch services, so Truckee Meadows Fire does pay for dispatch services, as well as North Lake Tahoe, and the tribal agencies also pay for dispatch, so they're all separate contracts that have come at various times through the board over the years in front of you.
Who, and do they pay the City of Reno for that?
No, they are, they actually, North Lake Tahoe, Truckee Meadows, and the tribal actually pay the Washoe County Sheriff's Office through the board for those services, because we provide those dispatch services for them.
Okay, just wanted to make sure we have that on the record. So I would, I would recommend that we give the manager some direction to start by sending a letter from the board to the City of Reno that we need to move forward and make some changes. There's a, this, the disparity is growing every single year, and some changes really need to be made. We are in desperate need of additional funding for the SO. We all know that. Forensics is a huge deal. We don't want to cut forensics off to anybody. To, it obviously has to do with solving crimes and public safety, and that's not the direction. The direction is, is we need to have some equality. And so I would make a motion, Mr. Chairman, if there is no other discussion.
Hold, just hold that thought. Do you have Madam Vice Chair signed in?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I totally agree with Commissioner Hartung. I have maintained, and you'll recall that I maintained this some years ago, that, that agreement is, is easy to cancel, to terminate. It's just, all we have to do is give notice, and I think it's three months or six months, I don't remember exactly how long it is. We have to figure out what we're gonna do about our own dispatch. I think it's time for us to move forward and do that, because, in fact, the citizens of the unincorporated portion of Washoe County are carrying Washoe County are carrying the citizens of Reno whenever there's a need for this particular type of service. And that isn't fair to the rest of the citizens. Everybody else pays their fair share. The city of Reno should be paying its fair share also. So the fact that not only does our PD not pay, but neither apparently does our FD pay. And so I totally agree with the commissioner that the time has come for us to do something about this.
All right. You know, and I want to make a comment, and I totally support Commissioner Hartong, and this is a discussion that we've had multiple times over. You know, and if you look just at the numbers and just, you know, if it was apples to apples, and Sparks PD currently pays $435,500, and Reno is twice the size of Sparks, we're looking at roughly almost $900,000 that the city of Reno would be owed to us for forensic service, if not more. Over $1 million, I believe, correct?
1.2 million.
1.2 million. Thank you for that reference. Okay. So there you go. $1.2 million. That is, I think that there's a very dramatic disparity there between what we are getting for, and I think it needs to be cleaned up. We've said this all along. You pay for what you get. And there shouldn't be any horse trading. We'll give you this for that. This needs to be very clean. And I think we've had years of horse trading going on from other commissions and councils, but it's time that we get those things back on track. So I would absolutely support a motion of that nature. So, Mr. Commissioner Hartong.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry. I'm being pulled over.
The agenda item here allows for the approval of the contracts with the various other agencies. The agenda item doesn't mention the absence of the city of Reno. If you wanted to give direction to bring back an item at a future agenda, we could do that under your Commissioner comments items. But the motion itself on item 11 needs to be limited to the agenda language and the agencies that are listed.
Thank you, Mr. Librally. All right. So Commissioner Hartong, if you can graft your motion sensitively.
Well, I would make a motion that we approve item 11 as stated in the staff report, and then quickly reopen Commissioner comments and have staff bring back an agenda item. And I agree with you. We need a clean... We just have to have a clean balance sheet. No more horse trading. The outdated... The agreement is outdated. And what are our options? I think that's crucial for us.
Okay. So let's go back and let's take the motion first. So you got the motion to accept the agenda item as drafted, correct?
As stated in the staff report.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. I see no public comment signed on this item. So I will call for the vote at this time. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So what I'm going to do at this time, I'm going to reopen agenda item four, Commissioners and County Managers' announcements for just a brief second here. So I'll reopen item four. So Commissioner Hartong.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And as stated earlier, the agreement is outdated. I completely agree with the chairman's comments about trading service for service. We really do need to just clean our balance sheets on both sides. So we know. And that's only fair to taxpayers in reality. And that's really where it comes back to, is it has to be fair and transparent to taxpayers. And I would ask staff to bring back some options for us. What are our options in terms of... And this is also to Mr. Manager, I see you sitting in the audience as well. What are some of the options that we can choose to exercise? I would hope that we could maybe make just some basic changes to dispatch, but if that's not going to be an option via the city of Reno, then what are the options that we may have to choose to exercise? And that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the manager got direction. So thank you very much, staff. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a wonderful day. Okay. So we'll close item four. We will now be... We'll move on to... We're going to quickly move on to item 22 at this time.
Chairman, item 22 is a recommendation to approve the use of general fund contingency in the amount of $1,108,289 to cover unanticipated flood-related expenses for fiscal year 2016-17. Approve budget appropriation transfers of $500,000 between functions within the general fund to cover additional flood-related expenses for fiscal year 2016-17. Approve the commitment of proceeds received from a sale of water rights in fiscal year 2016-17 totaling $2,895,600 in the capital improvements fund for costs associated with the January and February 2017 flooding events. And direct the comptroller's office to make the appropriate budget appropriation transfers. Net impact to county budget is zero. Possible action.
Thank you. Mr. Mathers?
Yeah, Mark Mathers, Budget Manager. I thought I'd give a quick status update. The Assistant County Manager went through the actions we're requesting. These actions only partially cover the costs the counties incurred to date for response and recovery efforts for the January flood and then the February North Valleys flood. So again, since it only partially covers our costs, I wanted to kind of give you this update so that you can see our total costs to date, and then we can talk about actions we'll need to do going forward in fiscal year 18. The first slide shows you a breakdown of our costs so far, again, in the response, the initial response phase, and also going forward a little bit into the recovery phase. We've spent, as of last Thursday, a little short of $1 million on the January flood. Most of that cost relates to our roads fund. A little less than $700,000 has been spent out of the roads fund to deal with those January flood repair costs. Another quarter million or so from the general fund, with the rest coming from our health fund, that's our health districts fund, animal services, and then a sundry number of other funds. In terms of the North Valleys flood that began in February and that we continue to deal with today, we've spent a little over $2 million. So that's from February through last Thursday. We set up a separate project number in the general fund for significant costs that departments could not absorb. And out of that project, we've spent $1.4 million to date. The roads fund has spent a little under half a million dollars to date. And then you see the other funds that have absorbed costs. Not shown on this pie chart are our utilities fund, a former water resources fund. There are significant costs that fund has absorbed as well for our wastewater treatment plant. They are not shown here, but they may be in excess of half a million dollars. So all told, as of last Thursday, we had a little over $3 million excluding the utilities fund. Including the utilities fund, we're now up to $3.5 million spent from January through June 22 to respond to those two disaster events. The chart here on slide four gives you a breakdown of our costs by month between the two floods. And I have to note that the costs shown here are when we paid those costs to vendors, not when we actually incurred costs. But the point of this chart is, as you can see, we continue to absorb costs month after month, significant costs. So we absorbed $500,000 or so in January. Again, in March, $362,000 in April, $1.2 million in May. Again, many of those costs relate to rental of pump equipment, labor, costs related to the HESCO walls back in February and March that were just paid in May. And then you can see in June, we've incurred another $364,000. Through the first three weeks of June, we may end up with half a million dollars of costs in June when all's said and done. So today's actions only, again, partially cover the county's costs that we've incurred. We're taking $1.6 million, $1.1 million from contingency and moving money around in the general fund to the tune of half a million dollars. And this chart shows you where that's going to go. So again, in that project number we created in the general fund to pay for significant costs, we'll need to move in $1.4 million. And then the health district came to the county for the mosquito spraying costs just through the end of June. That amounts to $205,000. So taking $1.6 million from contingency and the rest of the general fund to cover those costs. So what we have uncovered through these budgetary actions in fiscal year 17 are the roads fund's disaster expenditures, which are a little bit over $1.1 million. You might ask, how do they absorb that? And the answer is, they've had to defer capital projects that they otherwise would have done. So of course, their crews have been out there in Lemon Valley, you know, Truckee River flood channel in January, dealing with those issues. And so they've not had the time to pursue road projects that they otherwise had slated or scheduled to do in fiscal year 17. But of course, those costs, those road repair projects will need to be done. So they've deferred those expenses. They've deferred those projects for the time being, but the county will need to come back to them and do them. It's not a disaster, but we all know that this winter was severe, the greatest on record. And so the roads fund also incurred, you know, a tremendous amount of unanticipated costs for sand and so forth. That amounted to just under $229,000. And then, of course, we have all other funds here, again, over $200,000 that have absorbed those costs this fiscal year out of their own budget. So in total, we've had $1.65 million or so in costs that county funds have just had to eat. But again, that represents work that will need to be done. So again, in total, we've incurred close to $3 million for everything we've had to do since January to deal with the two disaster declarations. And going forward, we expect to incur an additional, at least, $6 million in repair costs. So as we move from the response phase to the recovery phase, there are a number of capital projects that'll need to be done. And our best estimate at this time is those will tally up to $6 million. In addition, the health district's not done, won't be done mosquito spraying at the end of June, of course. They'll need to continue spraying throughout the summer, and that amounts to more than $500,000. And so they've come to the county asking for relief for their funds for that cost, and we intend to do that. So again, tallying those two costs up, in fiscal year 18 and 19, we expect to spend another $6.5 million or more for disaster recovery costs. Possible funding sources for those, non-FEMA reimbursed costs. And we do expect to receive some support from FEMA, up to 75%, but there's no way of knowing which projects they'll fund versus which they won't until they approve our project request. But for non-FEMA reimbursed costs, we'll first look to the state fund for assistance to all counties and cities throughout the state for their disaster costs. That total amount of funding statewide is $2.44 million. So that won't go very far, but we'll certainly submit our request for reimbursement for our non-FEMA reimbursed share there. Then we will need to come back to the board in the first quarter of fiscal year 18 to access our $3 million stabilization fund. This is a fund, again, created by law for natural disaster events and revenue shortfalls. So we will need to tap into that fund in the first quarter of fiscal year 18. We also fortunately sold our water rights in several areas this fiscal year, and the proceeds of those water sales were $2 million, $2.9 million, excuse me. That's the third action in today's board item, which would be to commit those funds for flood disaster costs. We also have a $2.5 million general fund contingency fund in fiscal year 18. And so that's another possible option for us. And then our last resort potentially would be to defer capital improvement projects in fiscal year 18 and beyond. It's, again, not something we want to do, but as we look at how do we advance or front these costs before FEMA reimbursement, these are our options. So our next steps, just to give you an outline of where we're going, we have submitted project applications to FEMA for the January flood. We're waiting on their approval. Those projects have an 18-month timeline from the kickoff meeting we had with FEMA for that flood event, and that'll mean we have to complete them post-haste roughly by September 30 of 2018. We had our kickoff meeting for the North Valleys flood in February this month. So those projects will need to be completed in December, by the end of December of next year. And again, we expect up to 75% reimbursement, but only time will tell how much will actually be reimbursed and when. So there's a tremendous impact on the county's budget and county funds. Departments have done a great job absorbing, again, those costs, but it has impacted service levels, certainly the kind of road repair projects we wanted to do in fiscal year 17. We will try to minimize those impacts going forward. But again, a lot of it's out of our hands. But that gives you kind of a snapshot of where we stand today in terms of funding these repairs and where we will need to go in fiscal year 18.
Thank you, Mr. Mathers. Currently, I have Commissioner Hartong sign in.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So you're saying we have done something?
We have done a lot, $3 million worth. Yes, sir.
Okay. What might we expect from the state?
It's a good question. They haven't really articulated in any regulation or any communication whether that $2.4 million would be dispersed on a first-come-for-serv basis or based on total per share of FEMA reimbursements or how that would be allocated. So they just passed a bill to include that funding at $2.4 million. So we'll continue to talk to them, understand how they intend to disperse that.
Has the state done anything thus far for us?
They have. They've picked up a significant share of costs in the North Valleys area. That was one of our concerns, that they may submit a bill for those costs. They fronted. So far, they haven't. But, you know, candidly, we're not quite sure how far they'll go in terms of picking up any further costs. So at this point, we're operating the basis of whatever they've picked up to date, they've absorbed in their budget. Going forward, we expect no shared costs from them.
If we reduced perhaps some of our OPEB payments, Mr. Mathers, just for a time, could we possibly use that to cover ourselves in the interim?
That's an option, Mr. Commissioner. You know, there are potential repercussions to that. The rating agencies, you know, kind of noted our full funding of the OPEB annual required contribution compared to some of our neighbor agencies that don't do that. And so that's a feather in our cap in terms of our debt rating and our ability to access the capital markets. But that is an option.
I'm not talking about huge amounts. You know, I mean, just to float us for a time till we can get through this disaster and into the next one.
Mm-hmm.
It is not if they will happen, it is when.
Right.
Sadly.
Thank you, Commissioner Hartong. Commissioner Jung?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Mathers, I didn't see where you put in your cost allocations the forecasted permitting forgiveness that both this board and the Board of Health has reached out as an olive branch. And that needs to also be included in the future. I know it's hard to forecast it, right? But it needs to be a bucket held there saying, this is also some additional cost that this is going to take us.
Yep, you're right.
So with that being said, I also would like to ask how we're going to turn this into a sustainable issue in a closed basin that we have been educated about, and how we can get these homes either elevated or they become a GID or an SAD so that... And let's look across the rest of the county where this might also be an issue in future flooding events so that we are proactive rather than reacting to an emergency. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung. Madam Vice Chair, anything from you this time? Okay. All right. Seeing nothing further at this time, I don't have anybody signed in for public comment at this time. So seeing no public comment, I will bring public comment back to the board. Looking for a motion to approve, to accept the report. I have a motion by Commissioner Jung.
Second.
Second by Madam Vice Chair.
I was trying to push the button.
It's okay. Call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Librally, we're just getting pulled over here.
I just wanted to clarify, it's not just the acceptance of the report, it's the approval of the allocation of the funds. So there is action involved in what the staff's asking.
Correct. All right. Thank you. Commissioner Jung, would you amend your motion to state the approval of the amended...
Amender, withdraw?
Yes, amend or withdraw at this point for the actions for the item, which would be to accept the changes in the budget?
Yes, in the use of general funds.
Okay. So the motion, the motion or second, do you have approval? So the motion, the motion or second, do you have a proof? All right, so we have a motion, does that work for you?
I think maybe I heard you say the motion in the staff report is the one that you were making.
Yes.
Okay.
That's what she said.
The motion in the staff report. I heard her. I know it's difficult.
I'm so quiet, you know.
So we have the motion in the staff report, the second agrees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Mathers.
Well done.
All right, so we are on to 24. Discussion and possible direction. So, Mr. Manager.
Chairman, I am 24, discussion and possible direction to staff on changes to constituent services programs, including citizen advisory boards and district forum, community meetings for fiscal year 2017-18.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, for the record, Al Rogers, Office of the County Manager. I do have a brief PowerPoint here today, which covers most of the information that's contained in your staff report, so if you will indulge me, I'd like to run through those slides. I'd also, before I get started, like to acknowledge, recognize, and thank many people in terms of the overall constituent services program. Obviously, as most programs, all programs within the county, it's not done by individuals, it's done by teams. And today I have Dana Cersei and Sarah Tone, who are our key lead management analysts for the CAB, Constituent Services Program, and who are really the power behind all of what you're going to see here today in terms of the data and all of the CAB meetings and district forums that were held throughout the year. So thanks to them, thanks also to the communication team, Nancy Lewen-Hagan and her team. Again, we don't happen without their help in terms of communicating constituent issues, constituent concerns, and creating that feedback loop. And certainly, county administration, and thank you as county commissioners for continuing to provide that direction to us in terms of providing constituent services through a variety of means. And I'll begin with that, and we'll jump right in. Before I do, I would like to set some context in terms of what we're here today to do. As typical, we have done this on an annual basis, provide an update to our constituent services program, which includes CABs, district forums, and a variety of other tools that we continually evolve and transition with to reach out to our constituents here in Washoe County as far as the programs and services that we provide, and making sure that we're doing the best that we can in all of those. So, and today, we're really looking for direction. We are not expecting to leave here today with any final resolution in terms of the future of CABs, the future of district forums, but merely seeking your direction as we move forward. So with that, all of the data that you had in your report and that you'll see today is contained within the last year, using the June through the end of May of this year for that data set. District forums, community meetings, we'll cover those, the CABs, which has been mentioned earlier in public comment, and some other developing tools. Again, in the last year, we have initiated, still haven't fully developed, Washoe 311. I legislate is something that will be coming along that ties in with this agenda board meeting. Open Washoe, which is a tool that has been around and we've used it, we see using that more in the future. And then certainly other applications, and I use the example of Nextdoor, but other social applications that we're continuing to look at to engage our neighborhoods, engage our community beyond meetings. So covering first, the district forums and community meetings, you can see our data points on the right side in the table in terms of the total number. Certainly, that number is a large number when you consider the District 5, the community meetings that were held as a result of the flooding in the North Valleys. But you can see, those are all good numbers in terms of the district forums that were held in each one of the areas. Again, the idea with district forums is that they are a little bit more informal. We are not held to open meeting law in terms of posting an agenda and following that agenda. I guess my note here would be that district forums, community meetings are no different in CABs in terms of the information that's provided. That information is brought back, provided to all of you as commissioners, disseminated to various departments that are involved in those district forums. So I think that's the continuing part of education with district forums, is that we want to let people know is that they're not to replace CABs, they're really to make the CABs more efficient, and it's another tool in the chest, if you will, to reach out to our community on a more frequent basis, a more expedited basis, and a basis that, again, as we've indicated here, really facilitates a discussion versus a CAB meeting that are very strict in their open meeting laws in what can be done and what can be discussed and covered during that. So again, we look to district forums. As I've talked, the last two years of increasing that, we felt we did that in this last year, and would like to continue with that path. As far as the CAB meetings, again, we have a total of nine CABs. We did in the last year, merge, thank you, Commissioner Burke Bigler and Commissioner Herman. We merged the West Truckee Meadows CAB with Rudi in August, and that seems to be successful in the meetings that they had. We've got the information here as far as the meeting program structure, none of that has changed. Again, I emphasize, and really the direction that we seek moving forward is, is that it focuses on emerging land planning and development issues. Really, the heart of CABs is based on that, and really what we've used in the last two years to conduct CAB meetings or not conduct CAB meetings, using the district forums for public information, Washoe County Service information, information that can be easily disseminated and doesn't really take an advisory vote into consideration by the citizen advisory boards. You can see there that we had 48 scheduled and that we held 35 meetings over the course of the last year. Some more data points here. Again, we've got average, we've got median, our meeting length. Again, one of the goals when we started three years ago, you know, the feedback was, not the feedback, but the actual reality, we had CAB meetings that were going three and four hours into the evening. One of the goals was to make those more efficient, and we continue to do that. And again, I don't mean we're cutting people off or not letting them express their views, but I think we're doing it in a more efficient manner in terms of what's coming to the CAB and what's coming through district forums, I think has helped in terms of maximizing the efficiency of those CAB meetings. 67% of all the CAB meetings had a development project on the agenda. So looking at that chart, you can kind of see from each one, the number of CAB meetings held in relation to the development projects are very proportional. District 5 did have 13 development projects, but had a lot of, 17 meetings. So there were meetings held in District 5 that did not have development projects, and again, that was at the discretion of the Commissioner. So individual CAB metrics, real quick. Again, by the various CABs, the number of development projects, you can see in the South Truckee Meadows, Washoe Valley CAB had a lion's share of the development projects, which in relation went into the amount of attendance in each one of those. Again, we did have a couple of development projects that were very, I don't want to say necessarily contentious, but that were very, had interested citizens come to. So you can kind of see the relationship there, again, by the development projects and the attendance per CAB. Some possible structural changes, and again, we use this, and I really want to emphasize that, we use this as a starting point today. By no means have we provided all options. I think we wanted to, in any program, continue to do the program analysis and bring to you some possible options, but are certainly looking for your direction based on some of these possible changes to the structure or no change at all. But one is that we would reduce down to four, or excuse, yeah, four CABs, one per district, District 3 not having any CABs, which is the existing model as we sit now. So there are no CABs. This would result, as you see, in the same number of meetings, but the efficiency that we see in that is that we would have a meeting every month, which I think I heard in a couple of the public comments today, that a meeting every month would be desired, and that we would hear more development projects. And I guess in our efficiency, and one thing I'd like to highlight is that you saw that we heard 67% of development projects. So the timing of CABs is critical in our current structure. Some CABs meet every month, as South Truckee Meadows does, and they have development projects. They've met that. In some other areas, right now, we're having CAB meetings that don't really meet that criteria of having a development project on it. So we bring it to you in that context, is that if we'd like to proceed with having the CABs be the focal point of development projects, this would be a model that could be entertained, that would address that specific item in terms of making sure that development projects are heard. And just to clarify, when development projects are not heard by a CAB, because the timing is off in terms of when the development project is submitted, the CAB still receives those in a written format, which is still an opportunity for input. So I don't want to mean that, you know, they don't get an opportunity, but I think in a model like this, there would actually be a meeting held, and we wouldn't miss any of those opportunities for that CAB or that district CAB to hear a development project. And really, again, we started, as noted in this slide, is the models District 2. District 2, if we go back in time four years, was actually comprised of five CABs. We took five CABs, East Washoe Valley, West Washoe Valley, Southeast Meadows, Southwest, and Galena Steamboat, all five of those CABs, which existed before we put them into one CAB. So that's kind of our model that we bring forth today. Not saying it's the perfect model, but it's a model that should be considered, we feel. The other possibility is going to six CABs. Again, the goal here is not to necessarily diminish, decrease, eliminate CABs, it's to make them more efficient, along with all the other tools. And I think by looking at these models, that's what we're talking about today, is that we feel that the CAB program is very important. The CAB program has a place in terms of hearing development projects. District forums certainly provide that opportunity to hear updates, whether they be community updates from some of our regional partners or our own service providers, from public safety to community services to all of the services Washoe County provides, and we've done that and will continue to do that. So this model, again, very similar to the last one with four, but it does take into consideration two areas, both Incline Village, Crystal Bay, and the rural area as kind of additional CABs, if you will. The model there, though, would follow kind of that same meeting schedule that it would be, you know, tweaked a little bit in terms of, we don't have the bandwidth to have six CABs or even nine CABs and have a meeting every month. So we bring forward to you the options that we feel are based on the resources that are available now. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Great, thank you, Mr. Rogers. Commissioner Jung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Mr. Rogers and your team for that great report. I wonder, in the spirit of equity, in fiscal equity, if staff can come back with how much each CAB costs in terms of the, in any of the community outreach, in terms of the recording secretary, the posting, what staff have to be there, like sheriff, et cetera, and then maybe come up with the annual budget for each commissioner, that we then are able to use that money in a discretionary way that would fulfill citizen outreach, citizen engagement, citizen input, rather than trying to figure out one size fits all for all of us, because as you see, I don't have a CAB. I'm very, very much a landlocked commissioner in terms of development, but I would love to, you know, go out quarterly on a Saturday as my own commissioner to talk to my citizens. And again, then I should have more money, right, to provide a full breakfast if I want to, because I don't do it every month. And that way, I think it would focus us to be much more efficient with a limited amount or finite amount of dollars, instead of saying, let's do another CAB, I want another CAB here, hey, somebody else wants a CAB. It's not fair, and it's going back to one commissioner or two commissioners or four commissioners subsidizing another commissioner. So I'm wondering if we could look at it that way, not like a discretionary fund, but truly it would have to meet NRS of what citizen outreach and engagement is. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Hartung.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna kind of back up a little bit, because I spent many years on the CABs, and the CAB in my mind has always been the first step in the developmental process, period. It was always meant as a planning tool. And the interesting thing is, going back into the 90s, developers made a concerted effort to appease the CABs, because they knew at that time that if they could get a decision by the CAB of an approval, they were pretty much golden throughout the system. Commissioners followed, because the people had said, yeah, we're fine with this. And so what the developers would do is they would hold one meeting, come to the CAB one month, the CAB would make recommendations, then they would go back to the drawing table, take those recommendations and try to incorporate as many as they could, trying to make compromises for the CAB, and then take it back to the CAB the second month, and then if the CAB said, yeah, we were good, you know, then they would try to move through the process, and it was a very successful way. We were not, early on, I think we were situated in the manager's office, but my recollection was more through the planning department, it was all handled through planning. And community forums were a completely different thing, where the commissioner would come out and talk about different kinds of things and try to get feedback as to, you know, some of the sort of non-planning issues in the community. So it was, there were two very, very different and distinct uses for CABs versus forums. It was mentioned earlier that the other, the municipalities have forums also. True, City of Reno has a NAB, City of Sparks has what's called a CAC, a Citizens Advisory Council. It is a completely different makeup than a CAB, and it is not, it is, by the way, City of Sparks does not hear planning processes at the CAC. It's just a, it's just a community forum, and occasionally you see councilmen show up, but it's a, but it's a very different structure, and their structure is even different on how you can join. There's no set number of people that can join, you have to attend so many meetings, and I don't recall the exact parameters, but it is, it's a very different setup. My concern right now with the way things are, and I've seen this in District 4, I can't speak to Districts 1, 2, 3, of course, not, and District 5, I can't speak to that. But what I've seen in District 4 is, there seems to be a propensity for developers to not be able to hit the timing of the CAB, and they circumvent it. I'm sorry, our application didn't make, the CAB is next month, and we put our application in this month, and the timing seems, I will call it suspicious, and I have a problem with that. So what, one of the things that I would suggest, and by the way, it was also brought up by a member of the community, appropriately so, that you have distinct differences in who cares about what, when you start combining CABs, and I'll use District 4 as the example. The people in Spanish Springs, no matter what they do in Wadsworth, it looks great from their house. Doesn't matter. So when you start combining those CABs, and by the way, Wadsworth feels the same way about Spanish Springs, no matter what you do in Spanish Springs, it looks great from our house. You want to pile more traffic on the Pyramid Highway? Go ahead. Doesn't matter to them, because they don't have to live with that. So in, you see, especially in District 5, you see those real distinct differences. District 2, of course, you know, you start talking about the highlanders versus the lowlanders. It's a, it's a very different thought process from the people at the lake versus the people down here. So I think that there are some, there are some real issues that we should address. However, having said all of that, my suggestion would be is that we investigate sending it back to planning, from whence it came, because that's really what CABs are about, in my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, a couple of things. I have some concerns about using District 2 as an example, because it's a much more, it's a lot like District 3, it's much more landlocked, it's not as spread out, if you will, as, and so a lot of the issues that are important to the South Valleys are also important to Hidden Valley, and, you know, the sort of the same types of things. So I think that's a, that's a tough example. So especially if you want to compare it to Gerlach. Asking Gerlach, the people who live in Gerlach, to come down for a CAB meeting, or the people in the closer-in North Valleys to go to Gerlach for a CAB meeting, I think is, is really, truthfully, not going to happen. The citizens are not going to drive. They're just going to say, the county doesn't care about us, and so, you know, just let it go. That's what I think will happen. That's what I think will happen. So I have some real concerns about that. And the same, and I actually expressed this to our two beautiful ladies when I sat and chatted with them about this. I have some concerns about doing that with Incline Village. Incline Village's issues are vastly different than anything that happens here in the valley, regardless of whether you live in the mountains where you have bears and, you know, but you're not in Incline Village. That lake makes a difference in everything that happens up there. And unfortunately, TRPA and the influence of California and the federal government and all the other things that go on. So trying to merge them into the South Valleys cab, I don't think is a workable solution. They wouldn't come down here. But I do think that what we did with Verdi and the West Valleys was a good idea. I think those interests are all the same. And so that's an example of where we could merge something together and it's a very workable solution. And so I, you know, I'm in favor of that. But I am concerned about bringing this down so tightly that we really do come across to the citizens as if we don't really care what they have to say, and that's not true. Commissioner Hartung and I met yesterday with some people from, with the Puccinelli's who, as we all know, home burned in Verdi. And they had some very specific concerns that relate to Verdi and fire. And, you know, I think Commissioner Hartung said to them, "We're hearing you. We care what you say. We want to make sure that we're coming that way, coming across that way to citizens in all the area." I, in some respects, really support what Commissioner Jung has suggested is that a fund similar to what we do with our distribution fund. Figure out how much these cabs cost us and then divide it out in some manner. And I don't even care if it's a evenly distributed manner, but divide it out in some manner so that Commissioner Herman can do what she needs to do in her district. Commissioner forums work really well in my Incline Village district. And, but they don't work at all in the valley. Because nobody wants to come and hear what I have to say anyway. If they've got a question, they pick up the phone and call me. You know, so, but Commissioner forums work really well in Incline Village and we get lots of attention from that. So, I mean, I think it's kind of an issue that maybe what Commissioner Jung has proposed would be workable for both Commissioner Herman and Commissioner Hartung, who have much more widespread districts than the rest of us. So the other question is, and I brought this up and I don't know if, if there was, has anybody had any chance to look into it, but there is a possibility that we could discuss with the City of Reno merging the West Valley cab with the NAB that's also on that side and do it all, because the issues are the same. And I go to the NAB and speak and the city council, well, city Jarden, Councilwoman Jarden and Councilwoman Breckus both come and are willing to come and speak to us. And so I think there is some interest in merging us all together so that we are talking about the same thing. So that might be a way of addressing this and bringing the cost down also. So, anyway, thank you, Mr. Chair. That's my rambling.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Commissioner Herman?
I was listening so intently that I didn't press the button fast. You all come up with some pretty good ideas. Just a little background. You know, I've always tried to go back in history and figure out where it all came from and everything. And actually, since nineteen, seventeen seventy-six, there's been citizen advisory boards. They were there to go out and like work on a specific project that needed something done with it and come back to the legislative body with information that could maybe help the situation and then look for help from the legislature. Okay, or whatever, whatever place it was. One thing about your report, flood meetings, I don't categorize them as a community forum or a cab meeting, but they're specialized necessary meetings that serve to purpose. But I can't say that they should be put into the whole system financially or responsibly. An advisory means, just like I was saying a minute ago, that the county commission, in this case, would, would look actually to the cabs for the specific information they needed or have the cabs work on something and bring back that final, or not final, but the groundwork for what could happen in the future. Actually, the cabs or the advisory board for their geographical area. And so that's what I remember the cabs being, more like that. Where the people had more of a voice. Especially, like you're saying, my district is like spread all over the countryside and has a lot of diverse things, which the rurals are famous for. They are all different. That's why they're in different areas. And the purpose of the NRS was not specifically for development items. And so restricting a meeting to that is kind of defeating the purpose. I really believe that a lot less money could be spent. I don't, I know that the original citizen advisory boards had their own recorders. You know, local people, there's always somebody in the neighborhood that can do the job for a lot less money. I mean, I'm not trying to put anybody out of a job, but. And as far as determining what's going on their agenda, should be based on, maybe if there's a development thing that's going to fit into the time schedule, fine, we'll have that development thing because that's important that we speak on that and advise you to what we feel. By having the cabs regularly, we have, we don't have, the people don't have to leave work and come to our meetings because we already know if we're listening to our boards, our advisory boards, that's the way it's supposed to work. And if we get that report back from our advisory boards, then we don't have to have people come into all of our meetings. I mean, to these, that's what the purpose of the cabs are, to me. I mean, it's for a helpfulness to the county. It'll save a lot of money in the long run. But anyhow, those are just my things I'm throwing out at you. And so I'm glad that I hear some of these things from all of you and I appreciate every bit of help that you've given and your advice and everything. And I think we can improve the system. The program can work. And, and each commissioner in their own district can decide whether they want community forums or the other, because it depends on what the people want in my district. If that's what they need is their cab, then I'm going to try and get it for them. That's what I'm here for. All right.
Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Jung?
Hi, I think staff has received quite a bit of feedback. I just wanted to state for the record that in no mean, means am I saying that it should be exactly fair and square, because there is a hardship with a larger landmass, right? And there's no way Incline Village people will come down here and meet at this facility for a community forum or advisory board. There's no way somebody who lives in Gerlach should be expected to make that round trip. So I'm not saying it has to be exactly fair and square. I think we need to go see people where they're at. But I think another thing that commissioners can do is ask our 3-1-1 or whomever we have the bandwidth to do some surveying, to ask citizens in each of our areas. And obviously, for the commissioners with the really big landmasses and completely different citizens, you know, focus it in those areas with the input of your commissioner to ask people what they would like you to do for your community outreach and citizen involvement and engagement. Because I think the citizens are going to have a lot of different ideas and perhaps even novel ideas on how they would like to interact with their, not only their commissioner, but the whole policymaking body that is unique to their geographic location, socioeconomic status, the demographics, et cetera. So I would, I would look into that a little bit, that, and then let's talk to not only the people that show up at every meeting, right? And there are some people that show up at every meeting and run people out of meetings. That's what I experienced in my cab. Is let's talk, let's do more of an outreach to the people that are not showing up for whatever reason, who used to be involved and fell off, who recently signed up for our C-mail but has yet to show up at a meeting. And let's see what they would like to do. Because I also don't think it should be the same 10 people in charge of this, of that same cab with, and making sure that there are no other voices being heard at their meeting. So that would be my suggestion.
Thank you. Commissioner Hartung?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Commissioner Herman made a very salient point, in my opinion. She held a number of meetings that were specific to an issue. I would call them an emergency response meeting. Because that's really what those were. And they were specific to an issue that was, that was going on in a particular area. Commissioner Lucy, you saw the same thing with the Little Valley Fire. You know, again, and I'll say it again, and it is not if we're going to have another need. It is when. You all heard about the swarm of earthquakes up in Truckee. I hope they don't make their way down this way, but we are sadly overdue. And that's something that we should expect at some point, unfortunately. But there used to be a person, and they were associated with planning. Originally, it was Sherry Ingley. Actually, you know, Bob Webb under Leslie Roylance and Mr. Slaughter, you and I have had this conversation on a number of occasions because that was under your direction. They were, they were the, they were the trainers originally, Leslie and Bob. And then it was turned over to Sherry Ingley and then Don Spinola and then Sarah Delozier. And it was that one person, and that's all they did was cabs. But perhaps what we can think about, especially when it comes to planning, maybe what we need to do, and I'm not, I'm not for trying to attach additional fees and become cumbersome, but maybe we need to attach a fee to a permit for a cab. It's okay. It's okay. If you've got a developmental project in front of us, as part of that process, there's a fee that gets charged for going out to the cab. And, and I would be more amenable to whatever we decide the structure should be, schedule the cab every month, no matter what. Then that way, instead of, instead of saying, you know, the developer goes, "Well, they don't meet in June. They'll meet in July. So what we'll do is we'll, right after the cab meeting in July, we'll submit our application so that it comes through in August where there is no cab meeting." So we schedule them every month, no matter what, and then a week prior to, we cancel the meeting. That's it, you cancel it. So they, so they can't, they can't utilize that, that, I don't want to call it a flaw, but it's a flaw in the system. So, so, and if we, and if funding is the issue, you know, look, if we make it perfectly clear to developers that when you get a blessing from the cab, if you can somehow get that blessing from the cab, you know, you're, it doesn't grease the skid, but boy, it sure makes things a lot easier for the process the rest of the way, whether it's a Board of Adjustment or whether it's the Planning Commission and then potentially on to the County Commission and potentially on to Regional Planning and potentially Regional Governing Board. The cab is the first step. And if you can appease that some way, so, and I think that there are a number of developers that if you talk to them, that they really do want to make sure that they are appeasing the citizens in that area. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So in the spirit of time, I know we have some more discussion to have on this. Manager Slaughter, or Assistant Manager Slaughter, you have signed in here.
It was me.
Mr. Leporelli?
Just a quick note on the legal side. When, when the board creates a sub-board and gives it a job to do, that triggers the open meeting law. When it's created by ordinance, that triggers the open meeting law. And once you're under the open meeting law, then you're confined to your agenda. And that's sometimes challenging in the cab context because people come, they want to talk about things that are important to them, but if it's not on the agenda, you shouldn't talk about it and you definitely can't vote on it. So options that remove that requirement are things like community forums, where it's not a body that's created by the Board of County Commissioners and the membership is not appointed to certain seats. And you don't take advice from the cab directly to the County Commission, then the open meeting law doesn't apply. And then those meetings can cover whatever subjects the commissioners and the citizens want. So I point that out not to advocate for either one, but merely just to say that if the structure includes a recognized board created by an ordinance or other action of the County Commission, and if it advises the County Commission, then the open meeting law applies. You have to have the agendas, you have to have recording secretaries, you have to have minutes. In other contexts, it doesn't. And that's just an observation if it helps your thinking.
You know, and I'm, it sounds like that there's a lot of dissent today in regards to the discussions being had, that the options that are being presented today aren't perfected and nowhere near what we need them to be. I think you've gotten plenty of direction today in regards to what we need to see. Then we need to go back to the drawing board and refix and retool this. This is not going to be decided on today. This is not even going to be addressed today. I want to open this up to public comment at this time, but I don't think we're going to have any, I don't want to, this is, we need to, we've worked this. And so at this time, I think we're, that'll be the direction. We're not going to take any motion or direction on this, I mean, vote on this today. But we'll come back. So I'm going to open this up to public comment. I have, is Tammy Holt still signed in?
Tammy Holt still for the record. NRS 244.1945 states, "Any purpose" that, "For an advisory board, not just for development, not for just public forum, but any purpose for an advisory committee to work with the county." It also has in that same NRS, it talks about making sure that there's funding available. I understand funds have been tight and you guys are trying to cut corners, but maybe, I think Commissioner Hartung had a great idea, since we have developers that like to circumvent and cause issues like we've had in the North Valleys, that making them accountable is a perfect way to handle it. Because it's being put on the backs of the residents and it's also being a pressure on you guys to have to deal with residents saying, "Why are you doing this when we don't want it?" We need, residents can't, I'm one of the blessed ones. I am retired. I'm a retired state employee, so I know how government works. And I'm able to be here and talk with you guys. But other residents need to be able to do this in the evening when they can come to a forum, where they can talk and they can say, "Hey, we don't like this, we like that. We need help here, this is what's going on." What they are trying to do right now isn't helping anybody. And if you have more than two meetings a month, one is a forum to talk about this, that, or whatever, and then you have the cab meeting talking about developers, you're going to not get the interaction you need from your constituents, your taxpayers, the people that are out there. So there's got to be, and it says right in the NRS that an advisory board does not have to be for development only. And I think somewhere along the line, Washoe County and its structure has just decided to make cabs for this one little thing. And I think they've gone past what the actual NRS states. It's very simple, it's very clear. It, it reads just like this, as soon as I can get it up. It says, "The county, the Board of County Commissioners of any county may establish an ordinance advisory boards for any purpose relating to county about which the board desires study or advice on." That's very simple. I think it's getting a little convoluted and a little detailed. I think it's getting a little convoluted and a little detailed in certain areas, and it needs to open back up and be what it's for, for the residents to talk about what the developers are doing, what needs to be done out in our areas, things like ditches not being done correctly, getting it to where the people can hear about it, and the board can say, "Okay, what's going on here? The residents are saying this."
Thank you, Ms. Holt. All right, next I have Ms. Carol Burns.
I'm Carol Burns, resident of Sun Valley. I have to chuckle, Mr. Rogers says cabs are very important. Our second cab of the year meeting was abruptly canceled on May 30th by Mr. Rogers, and we were not told, and we were told not to expect another meeting until October. We were given no explanations why this was occurring, and our agenda had already been posted to the internet. We had a forum meeting on the 20th of May, which I felt was unsatisfactory, since our problems in Sun Valley were offered no solutions. When I asked Mr. Solano, I believe his name is, about our ditches and our right-aways getting cleaned, he gave no definite answer, except that he had only four crews, and they were all working. Later, to date, I have not seen any repair work going on in Sun Valley on our ditches. We also addressed the Seventh Street problem, which is the Landera Ranch development that we can talk about. And we were, I was surprised to see that the folks, or I got the impression from the state and the county people, road people, that they were not really aware that we were going to have a problem. And we are going to have like 256 homes going in there, and we're going to have a two-lane road between us and Golden Valley, and then we have a light, and then we have the two lanes on Sun Valley Boulevard. The people, that, that meeting, we're talking about the complications that they already have at Seventh Street and Sun Valley Boulevard, but we were hoping to address the issue We, as taxpayers supporting the county, we feel we are deserving of answers and explanations. We have a large housing development about to become a reality, which will further impact our traffic problem, which is serious enough with all the people cutting through from pyramid communities, using our valley as a cut-through to the freeway. We have a serious problem with the need for our ditches to be cleaned and rebuilt before the next possible winter. The ditches are so bad, the road pavement is falling into them. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Burns. Ms. Catherine Snedeker.
For the record, my name is Catherine Snedeker. I'm a non-resident, non-person, non-enfranchised, natural woman. You know, I think this commission, and the previous commissions, as well as staff, have done an excellent job at trying to silence us. I mean, you really work hard at it. Mr. Liparelli, at his orientation for CIBs, promotes how important it is to have a meeting every month. We have a meeting scheduled, and it gets canceled too, and the idea that this is only for development, who made that decision? And where'd they get the authority to do it? To make a CAB that restrictive, that you can only talk about development, everything else has to be a community forum for which there is no public record. Only at a CAB meeting is there a public record. And this commission, with staff, maybe this commission is changing their mind after they hear it, but staff definitely wants to restrict what we can talk about. Well, we have problems with fire in our area, big problems. We have problems with our GID, which, I would like to add that my comment to you about them not doing the road right before they put the resurfacing down, they've decided to do it right this time, and they put down a road base before they resurfaced, so I did have some impact on that. And there are many other things that we need to talk about in our CAB meetings, besides development, besides roads. And next door is a joke. What a stupid program that is. That doesn't give you any insight into anything. My dog got lost. Does anybody have jumper cables? I have a Polaris for sale, would you like to buy it? That's what next door is supposed to be about? A marketplace? I mean, seriously. You don't want to hear from us. You don't want to hear our ideas. We're not officials, we're just regular folks. But you know what? When you're impacting our lives on a subject, we become the experts. Because we research it back and forth, we find out the history, and we find out what your real authority is. And you don't have the authority to restrict our conversation at a CAB meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Snedeker. Mr. Garth Elliott.
Commissions, for the record, Garth Elliott, and I'll try to go a little easier on you, maybe not. The problem with the cabs is sitting in this room. It's our community service group. The problem with the cabs is our community service bunch. As an example, development in 40 years was never tied to the Sun Valley cab. It was a bonus, a very good bonus. As Commissioner Hartong brought out, my six years on the cab were absolutely indispensable for giving the commission the right information. Ladera, who's coming before you later, wanted 1,200 homes. I got up and said, "Over my dead body." Well, I'm still alive, and they're still putting homes in, so somebody won. They're down to about 300. But they were, wanted to put 1,200 homes someplace that would've been a travesty to do it. But they came before us, we had real lengthy discussions, heated discussions about, "That wouldn't be a good idea." And that's what went forward. The word "efficiency" was bantered around by community services this morning. I've never heard that word used to describe Washoe County. We've got three or four levels of animal services alone, managers upon managers upon managers. We had seven levels of IT at one point in time, before 2008, seven different groups of IT to do one thing, IT. No, efficiency in Washoe County, that'd be a great concept, but no, don't, please don't use the word "efficiency" with Washoe County. It'd be an aspiration, but no, it's, and it shouldn't be used to describe the cabs at this time. No, please. That's not a place to be efficient, it's a place to get stuff from the public, from your constituents, the people that voted for you, to you, in a very expeditious way. And it has worked for many, 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 many years. Leave it alone. It only became an issue, it only became problematic when community services got developed. And that's from someone that's been watching it very intently. And there is some merit to putting it back with development, but its primary goal is not to deal with development issues. That is a very good bonus, that's a great thing to happen. And that would be better if we met more routinely, but it is a great time to get things fleshed out. So, let's go. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Elliott. Next I have Ms. Elizabeth Gamble.
Morning. Elizabeth Gamble, still from Gerlach. That was fast.
Apologize.
All right.
Sorry, Ms. Gamble.
I've heard a lot of good things today about some of the plans that were going into place, and the discussions about what's working and not working. And as in most of life, a square box and a square peg go together, but we're not that. So, part of the issues we have with our cab in Gerlach is the last-minute agenda arrival. We are a large neighborhood out there, and if I post the agenda at the post office when it arrives, two days before our meeting, only about 20% of the people who live up there are possibly even going to see it. I understand that agendas take a while to produce and put together, but we actually need it there at least 15 days before our meeting, so that the ranchers who live 100 miles away, who come in to check their mail, have that public posting. Internet does not work in Gerlach. We only have about 58% of the population who actually have internet. The rest of them come to Bruno's, have a cup of coffee, maybe drink and dinner, and check their internet there. It's not out on all the ranches. So that is part of our attendance issues with the cab. Development, I think's probably not going to bother us for a little while, I'm just mentioning the other ones. The post office still works good for everybody in Gerlach, though. DMV mails me, taxes mail me, everybody involved in government manages to mail me. We don't have a plan for getting our cab information to our community outside of a electronic format, and that's, that's a problem we're having. And the follow-up for our cabs, we've had some difficulty with that. I went online the other day to look for our minutes, because I was going to try and review some notes. Our minutes from 2017 aren't there, only our minutes from one meeting in 2016 are there. So there's some delays at the posting level, coming back from staff, so that we can keep our public informed. I have draft copies, I hesitate to put the draft copies up for the people who are in my community. That's where I'm at. There's improvements to be made, I'm looking forward to being part of the improvements. Nothing's static, nothing's fixed. It can be better, if it's broke, and I do find it broke. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gamble. All right, seeing no further public comment, bring it back to the board at this time. You know, Mr. Rogers, I think we've heard quite a bit of comment from all the commissioners today, and we are in a pinch for time today. And so I think, due to the time constraints that we're having, and the challenges that we've seen so far today, I would urge the public that have come today and spoke to get with your commissioner, to voice your opinions. We will try to regraph this and bring this back at a later time and date for further discussion. So, with that, I'm going to close the item for today. I know, Commissioner Hartong, I'm very sorry, but I got to move on.
It's really important, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Hartong.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I take exception when someone says that it's staff's fault.
Yeah.
The fault lies up here. If you guys want to have a beef, it's not them, it's us. And we give them direction, period. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
I have something.
All right. Commissioner John.
Don't be mad at me. One thing I just wanted to piggyback on was Commissioner Hartong's suggestion that part of the permital process is a fee that goes towards the cab function, and I also believe that will work in terms of getting them to show up then, since they paid up for, paid for the meeting. So I would like that looked into, the legality and the, and you know, again, staff, I know you try to do the best you can, but let's look out what the best practices are, and how it works in a community that is so diverse as ours is, and so spread out.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. So, we're not taking any direction on this time, nor any options, so like I said, I would urge you, and Commissioner Hartong and Commissioner John Wright, we are the decision-makers, we are the ones that hold the rules here, so we will urge you to discuss that with us. And we will have further discussion about this and bring this back at a later time and date. All right, I'm going to close, item 4, 24 at this time. In a matter of time, we've been trying, I've been trying to get to this, so at this time, I'd like to do, you know, Assistant County Manager has been sitting in, running the meeting for us, he has a 1 o'clock that he has to get to, and I have, I've been trying to be cognizant of that as much as I possibly can, so I'd like to go to, move to item 30 at this time, which is a proclamation. So, Mr. Manager, will you, or, you know what, Madam Vice Chair, will you read the item for me, for our, item 30, please?
It is a proclamation for the recognition of Kevin Schiller for his 20 years of service to Washoe County, as a Washoe County manager and assistant manager, and we are dearly going to miss him. So, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And like I said, in recognition time, I want to invite Emma Schiller to come down and be with us down here today, please. Emma Schiller is our Assistant County Manager's beautiful daughter, one of his beautiful daughters, the other who couldn't be with us today, who's on vacation. You know, it brings me great honor, I think every, I think this man standing next to me, in my short time here at the commission for the last two and a half years, has become a friend, a confidant, an individual that I go to many times with issues that relate to the county, but many times the issues that don't. And I can't, you can only speak to the major of a man when you feel trust and love for somebody who you can, you can give them your heart and your soul and know that they will protect that. And that is what this individual has done, not only for this commission, but for every department that he has participated in, and I think every department, all 24 departments have seen his face over the last 20 years of service while he has been here with the county. He has done a number of things, moving up through human services and social services in the ranks, as the director, you know, and many times he's run interim director of many departments for us. So it gives me great pleasure to read a proclamation, but also great heartache, because knowing losing him is, you know, a very challenging thing for me, and especially losing him to Clark County. He will be tremendously, and he'll be a tremendous asset in Clark County, but it is a, it is a, it's a dire loss for us. So, it brings me good, great pleasure and honor to read this proclamation for you today. Here in Washoe County, the proclamation reads, "Whereas Kevin Schiller dedicated more than 20 years of service to Washoe County as a social worker, Director of Social Services, and Assistant County Manager. And whereas during his career and service to Washoe County, Kevin Schiller made tremendous, made a tremendous impact with most of our vulnerable citizens in northern Nevada, working with multiple stakeholders to create the Crossroads Housing Program, SOVER-24 Program, Child Welfare Reform, and Child Welfare Integration, to name a few of Kevin Schiller's signature initiatives that benefit Washoe County and the community. And whereas Kevin Schiller came to the office of the County Manager as an Assistant County Manager three and a half years ago overseeing Community Services Department, Social Services, Senior Services, Regional Animal Services, Medical Examiner's Office, Public Guardian, Public Defender, Alternative Public Defender, and the Regional Library System. And whereas Kevin Schiller has accepted the position for the Assistant County Manager in Clark County, Nevada, and will continue his outstanding service to the citizens of Nevada beginning July 10, 2017. And whereas Kevin Schiller demonstrated a dedication and tremendous work ethic to countless staff members, department heads, elected officials, and regional leaders over this more than 20 years of service to Washoe County. Now therefore, the Washoe County Board of Commissioners does hereby give a heartfelt thank you to Kevin Schiller for his, for his service to Washoe County and the citizens of northern Nevada for making it a better place to live. Dated this 27th day of June 2017, signed by myself, Chair Bob Lucy, of the Washoe County Commission." Congratulations, Kevin.
So, I said I wasn't going to cry. You know, I guess what I would say right off the bat, I've stood here many times, and I think what I would first say is I grew up in Washoe County. From when I got hired as a social worker to, you know, I never thought I would even stand at this dais. So, you know, to each of you as commissioners, you know, I've been through a lot with you. And I mean this from the bottom of my heart, the individuals in this county, from my staff to commissioners, to John, to Paul, you know, when I was sitting up there waiting for this, that's one of the things I was thinking about, is it's really a family. And that won't ever go away. My beautiful daughter's here, she will be living in Washoe County, I will be here and in public service. I think as much as there's so much criticism of- I think as much as there's so much criticism of what we do and how we do it, you know, it's part of the process. So I think when you become a part of it, it really engulfs your soul. You almost, and I wouldn't say it this way, it's a passion. And because of each of you as commissioners and the commissioners before you and the relationships and the opportunities, I've had the ability to do things that I never thought I would have an impact on, but what I say is, it's not about me, it's about everybody around you. They're all part of the collective impact. So, you know, one thing that I, and it's just an example, on Friday, the Crossroads clients did a surprise party for me. And I got to walk into that, and every Crossroads client was wearing a blue t-shirt because I told Sean I wanted a picture with my Crossroads clients. You know, it's just one of those things that's important to me. I got there and I got my picture, but they had fundraised, they had done bake sales, they had done all these things, and they actually gave me, for those of you that know me, I like to shoot, they gave me a gun that was custom engraved with, it says Crossroads and Washoe County, and honestly, I was bawling more than I am today. But I will tell you, that could not, that blew me away, number one, but number two, here's the story. When I sat down to have the barbecue, I was sitting there with my wife and all of us, and client was across the street, across the table from me, and I just started asking him how it was going, and, you know, these are people that don't know me. They don't love me, and he started telling me he'd been there a few weeks, and two things happened. One, about halfway through the dinner, he looked over at my wife, I wasn't there, and started crying and saying, "This feels like family." And to me, that's about what we do here. I am selfish in Washoe County, that that's what we do. We take care of people. We may not always do it perfectly. I've made plenty of mistakes, but that's what we do, and that's why I commend our staff internally, externally, stakeholders, everybody we work with, you know. And then a second story was, there was a lady that was serving the hamburgers. So she thanked me, and I talked to her a second. I got into the conversation, and she walks up, and there was a gentleman next to her who was about 34 years old, and that was her son. And what she had told me is, she ended up here from Baltimore and had been in programs and got into Crossroads, and told me that her son showed up there. He slept on a bench outside of Crossroads to get into Crossroads and now has turned around his life. So my point is to all of you, because we get stuck in the day-to-day of what we don't see, that's what really matters, and I truly believe this. All of our employees, you know, they're dedicated to that. I'm very proud to say that, and I look forward to being in Clark County, working at the same level, but also creating statewide impacts. And that, there's a reason I'm going to another county government, there's a reason that it's public service, and there's a reason for people. So with that, I know it's lunchtime and everything else, but I do want to recognize, just thank you, all of you personally, you know that, everybody here. And I couldn't thank everybody because it's just impossible to do. They know who they are, and especially my daughter.
Yeah, I want to do a picture with him, you know, and I think Kevin is modest, even when he says he's going to another county government. This man is looked to by state government officials, national officials for his programs. I mean, he has received accolades across the country for the work he's done. So, Madam Vice Chair, I mean, I'd like to, you know, offer the floor to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I know that there's a couple of commissioners who have some things they'd like to say, and so I will recognize Commissioner Hartong.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I didn't need to start, but I'm happy to. Mr. Schiller, first off, you can leave the Keys and the Fury at my house. And I'm sure he's given you my phone number. I live very close. I do everything but Windows, so feel free, if you need something, I'll be like your uncle. I'm happy, I'm happy to come over and give you a hand. So, Mr. Schiller, you're a unique person. Kevin, you've always come from a place of, how do we get the impossible done? From a place of, that's not undoable. That's not, we can find a way to achieve what you're looking to do, and that has always impressed me. I have said in many occasions, you are a power lifter, and I would caution you to learn to say no. I've never seen you say no, ever. Every single thing that this commission has asked you to look into and try to achieve, you not only did it, but you did it well. Crossroads is a perfect example, and there are more programs that have your fingerprint on them than I can begin to enumerate, and you will be sorely missed, there's still time to change your mind. And we look forward to seeing what's next for you on the horizon in terms of the state. And I know that you'll make a huge difference in the state, and the programs that you've initiated are models nationwide. And it has been my honor to work with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I mean, Mr. Commissioner Hartong, sorry. Commissioner Herman, did you have something you wanted to add?
Just want to say we love you, and we're going to miss you terribly.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Herman. Commissioner Jung?
Well, I have to congratulate you first off because I know this is a big promotion for you in our largest county in the state, and I want to thank you for your friendship from the day that I started. And you, the luckiest thing that you have going for you is that you are a man of so much integrity and compassion, and I know your mother would be so proud of you. I'm going to miss you.
Thank you, Commissioner Jung, and I get to follow that. Kevin, you, ever since I came, I was elected, you've been fabulous. You've been so much help in so many ways, and I can't tell you how much I appreciate it. I've probably learned more about county business from you than from anyone else, and we've got some pretty sharp people who've done a lot of work for us, including our current manager and our head of planning and our, everybody, just our everybody have been wonderful. But you have always been there. You take my calls, you answer the questions, and I appreciate that. Thank you very much. We're going to miss you a great deal.
Madam Slaughter?
Mr. Manager?
This is tough. Couldn't do what I do without Kevin. Brought him in as, I've known Kevin for quite a while, but when I became manager, I had no question. I knew who I was going to bring in because I knew what he would bring to the team, and couldn't do what we do without Kevin. He's a friend, and I just want to say thank you publicly to Kevin Schiller, Assistant County Manager for Washoe County. He is what Washoe County is about, so thank you for everything, Kevin.
Thank you. Big round of applause one more time. All right, let's take a picture with this guy.
One last picture, he can't get away.
Do you want me to take one on your personal?
Yeah, please.
She looks just like you.
Is that what your DNA does?
Do we need to get closer? I think we're a little off-center here.
There's some space in there, come on.
Yeah, it works.
Three, two, one more, three, two.
Say depends.
Don't say depends on me.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah. Okay, so thank you for, you know, allowing us to do that. I know it's a challenge, and I know a lot of people are here for a number of issues. At this time, it is 12:40. We're going to, I'm going to take and put the commission in recess for now, for an hour. We will be on lunch break till 11:40. We'll be back at 11:40, 1:40, I'm sorry, thank you. I'm trying to take an hour off, taking an hour off and shaving an hour off of our day. So we'll be back at, we'll be back at 1:40 and reconvene at that time. All right, it is 2 o'clock. We are back from recess, and right now, I'm actually going to open the public hearing for, so our public hearing is now open. It is 2 o'clock, and we are on agenda item 27. Mr. Manager?
Mr. Chair, this is public hearing, item 27. This is for possible action to adopt an ordinance approving a second amendment to a development agreement, Tarasante, originally approved in 2008.
Any, do we have...
This is just an extension, correct?
Yeah, do we have staff?
Is something moving in?
Yeah, it does need to be read, so go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Okay, if adopted, this will be ordinance number 1594, an ordinance approving a second amendment to a development agreement, Tarasante, originally approved in 2008, development agreement DA 08-005, ordinance number 1367, and first amended in 2010, amendment of conditions AC 10-002, ordinance number 1435, to extend the deadline for filing the first final map to June 6, 2021, with one additional one-year extension granted at the discretion of the Director of Planning and Development. The project includes a total of six contiguous parcels located approximately 1.7 miles south of Mount Rose Highway at the terminus of Callahan Road. The parcels total approximately 394 acres and is subject to the Rain and Embardo specific plan development standards. The parcels are located within the forestry plan and are situated in Section 11, Township 20 North, Range 19 East, MDM, Washoe County, Nevada, APN 04714103, 20.123 acres, 04714106, 43.177 acres, 04714107, 20.126 acres, 04714111, 183.377 acres, 04714112, 85.322 acres, and 14813004, 41.937 acres, and this was previously issued, bill number 1730.
Okay. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. All right, staff, we do have some discussion for you from the commissioners. Commissioner Hartong?
No, Mr. Chairman. All I was going to say is, and I can ask Mr. Jung, this is just an extension of their request, just to make sure that we put this on the record.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hartong, yes?
So, Mr. Chairman, I mean, these are relatively pedestrian moves. We've extended the same option to a number of developers. This is in District 2, so I would certainly acquiesce to you, but for me, I have no problem with these kinds of extensions.
Absolutely, and this is, this lays in the heart of my district, and absolutely, I think this is just a, like I said, this is merely some bookkeeping. This is something we do grant to developers quite frequently. I have no, I have no, you know, I have no objections to this at this time, so looking for, looking for a motion at this time.
Mr. Chairman, I would move to introduce ordinance 1594.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. Second on your...
Oh.
There we go. I have a motion and a second, a call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
We'll note for the record.
Let the record show that Commissioner Jung is absent for the vote. The motion carries four to zero. All right. Thank you very much to everyone for that. We are on to public hearing, item 27, item 28.
Item 28 is also public hearing, possible action to consider, one, a report of each property delinquent on its utility charges and the amount of each property's delinquency, along with any objections to the report, and, two, after considering the report and any objections to it, determine whether or to adopt the report and correspondingly adopt a resolution to collect delinquent utility charges on the tax roll.
All right. Any discussion for commissioners? Okay, looking for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second by, a motion by Commissioner Hartong.
Public comment?
Second by, yeah, I have public comment. Seeing I have no public comment signed in at this time on this item, so we'll close the public comment, bring it back to the board. All right, looking for, call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Let the record show that Commissioner Jung was absent for that vote. Motion carries four, zero, and unanimous. All right. Mr. Manager, we're on to public hearing 29.
Item 29 is public hearing for possible action and discussion of the Tahoe Racket Club's appeal of the Planning Commission's approval for special use permit WSUP 17-0004, Lake Tahoe School, to modify its special use permit SW02-008, which permitted the operation of a kindergarten through 9th grade private school in an existing commercial building. The approved modifications will permit the construction of 13,906 square-foot multipurpose building with parking. As approved, the new building will require the relocation of the access road that serves Lake Tahoe School and provides access to the Tahoe Racket Club, a residential condominium subdivision from Tahoe Boulevard. The current access is located approximately 725 feet northwest from the intersection of Country Club Boulevard and Tahoe Boulevard. The access easement will be relocated approximately 200 feet further to the northwest.
Okay, great. So the applicant was the Lake Tahoe School and property owner is, but we also, the appellant is the Lake Tahoe Racket Club. Mr. Looparelli, could you give us a little bit of insight to this issue, please?
Mr. Chairman, this is an appeal of the granting of a special use permit by the Planning Commission. The appellant is entitled to a hearing under the county code and a decision on the appeal within 60 days of the issuance of the final written decision of the Planning Commission. My understanding is that there will be no other county commission meetings between now and the expiration of the 60 days, so without some sort of a waiver and agreement by both sides of the issue as to the timeframe, today's the day for making a decision on the appeal. When sitting in that capacity, you are permitted by the county code to uphold the decision from the Planning Commission, to reverse it or to modify it, and if you make a modification of the decision, you also may remand it to the Planning Commission for, or the Planning Commission to consider the modifications that you've made. The appellant has the burden of proof. In other words, the, needs to demonstrate what the error or the misapprehension by the Planning Commission was in order to get this board to essentially overturn that decision.
Okay. So at this time, what I, I'm going to open the public hearing and allow the public to speak on this issue. Currently, I have Mr. Bill Baker and Mr. Pete Zafraza signed in to speak on this item. But what I'm going to ask of you, based upon the information that was provided to us by the attorney this afternoon, that the expiration of the appeal, the 60-day time period, runs out on July 10th, a day prior to our next, our first meeting available in July. a day prior to our next, our first meeting available in July. So, with that being said, it would be at the discretion of both parties, both the applicant and the appellant, if they would so choose to continue this matter until that July 11th meeting. We, but we would have to get a, approval from both parties today allowing us to do so. So that is an option to you. If that is not suitable and not within your scope of what you would like to see, we will make, we can take a position on it today as well. So, with that being said, I'm gonna open it up and let the appellant come down. Yeah, let's have the applicant come down. Mr. Xline, if you can come down, you know, based upon the information that we've just kind of outlined to you, what would be amenable to you?
Good afternoon, Nick Xline, on behalf of the Lake Tahoe School. Thank you so much for having me today. Just to start, we are agreeable to the extension of a day. And just out of clarification, is the, the next county commissioner meeting the 11th or the 12th?
It's July 11th.
I'm flying to England on July 12th, so this makes, this makes things a lot easier for me. Thank you so much.
Yeah, okay.
So I'm definitely agreeable now.
Okay, okay. So July 11th, all right. So I'll ask the applicant, the appellant to come down. Oh, yeah, Mr. Xline, before, I'm sorry, Commissioner Harton, just ask you a quick question.
Mr. Xline, just a fast question, and I just wanna make sure that, that we get this on the record and perhaps Mr. Loparelli doesn't feel the same way. You do have the authority from the Lake Tahoe School to make this decision?
Yes, we've, I've talked about it with their board, their legal counsel, and we reached a consensus yesterday afternoon that we would postpone until the first meeting in July.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harton. All right. Mr. Baker, Mr. Sefraza.
As one of the appellants, I do waive the timeframe and we very much appreciate the cooperation of Lake Tahoe School and we hope actually to have a resolution way before his trip to England, so, thank you.
All right.
Good afternoon, Commission members and staff. Bill Baker for the Tahoe Racket Club Homeowners Association. That's perfectly fine with us. We're very close at our negotiations to resolving the whole matter and the 11th is fine.
Okay, fantastic.
Thank you.
Vice, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanna take the opportunity to thank all of you guys for working so hard on coming up with a resolution so that this is really not something that should be before this commission anyway, so we're really glad that you're able to work it out and I know you're really close and, and so we're looking forward to you having it all resolved. So it doesn't even have to come back here on the 11th, so, thank you very much. Appreciate your time.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Harton.
Sorry. Mr. Loparelli, can you, do we need a motion to extend this or can, can we just go on the request of the applicant and the appellant?
Mr. Chairman, for, for the commission, this was scheduled as a public hearing on, on the appeal and the required notices were sent out notifying folks that this is the day for the hearing. So you can continue it with the acquiescence of the parties, they've both said so on the record, but I think it would be necessary to open the public hearing and take any testimony from anyone who, who, who wants to talk today and maybe can't talk on, on the 11th. And then the decision of the board would be to continue this hearing to July 11th.
So then a motion to continue?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
So, at this time, we'll open the public hearing. The public hearing is open on this item. And I have no individual signed in currently on this item. Is there any individuals in the comment, in the, in the public or in the audience today that would like to participate? Seeing none, Madam Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I will make a motion to continue this issue with the acquiescence of both the applicant and the appellant until July 11th.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All right, call for the vote. Madam Clerk, got it? There we go. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Please place your votes. Motion carries unanimously and let the record show that Commissioner Jung is now, been, is now back with us to place that vote, so. All right. We will close the public hearings. We, public hearings are closed. Mr. Manager, we are on to our final public comment of the day.
We are, Mr. Chair, this is item 31, which is public comment, comment heard on this item is limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. The commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with comment limited to three minutes per person and comments will be made to the board as a whole.
Thank you. All right, I have two, two members signing in. Ms. Tammy Holt Still, followed by Ms. Catherine Snedeker.
Good afternoon, Tammy Holt Still, for the record. Finishing up what I was going to be talking about earlier was again, communication is education. I have spoken with representatives from the state of Utah regarding the Great Salt Lake because that is a closed basin and I was getting my education and learning what they have done instead of recreating the wheel that we use, maybe what models they have and understand what they are doing. Also, I learned in the process, there is something called a geomorphic study. I'm pretty sure that Washoe County or the city of Reno has not done this study for the geomorphic study to find out exactly what is going on with our area as far as the geomorphic study is a supplement to our 100-year records that we have. So the geomorphic study goes through and it can see how much the high water level is to decide where buildings should be or how buildings should be to help prevent flooding like Salt Lake City had in 1982, which was a very interesting learning experience. And due to the fact that there is additional building going on towards White Lake, that is something that I think that Washoe County might really think about either going in with the city of Reno or definitely working with the city of Reno since they're wanting to put in over 4,100 homes over in the White Lake area and we already know that some of those Washoe County residents had come close to flooding in that area. Also, I wanted to let you know that I have been in contact with Senator Heller's office and we are working with them regarding the flooding situation and additional funding, finding that kind of thing. Also, one of the things I wanted to go back on was the Tiger Dams and the representative that we spoke to and we were called, we were told it was Lansing Development that was looking into this product. It's for the Padre Ranch Master Plan. So, and that is actually going through the city of Reno and that is for the property that is right at Lemon Drive in Arkansas. So, that area needs, that needs to be looked at because that is the low, one of the low points besides Pompeii where the water is at. So if they're going to be damming it up, we need to make sure that the people on Lemon Drive, there's three homes on Lemon Drive that are surrounded by water. We need to make sure that they're not gonna get any more damage and we definitely wanna make sure that no more water is going back onto Pompeii. It's already got enough water as it is. One of the things about cabs is like, since I've got you here, if there had been cab meetings regarding waste management, I think the issue that has been dropped here lately regarding waste management and the services for the rural areas would have come out to you guys sooner and you wouldn't be backpedaling, as you might wanna call it, trying to get, trying to get something. So, things to look at.
Thank you, Mr. Tammy. Thank you, Tammy. Ms. Snedeker.
For the record, Catherine Snedeker, non-resident, non-person, non-franchise, natural woman. I'm gonna make it really clear right now. If I wanna say something bad about staff and their actions, I will. It's my right. And until you have been set up by staff, had staff and the court and the district attorney come against you in a phony case and send you to jail, all done by staff, you don't get to tell me I have to address you. And that I can't talk about staff. It's my right. All you do is sit up here and mimic whatever they say. You don't know anything about what's going on. Staff brings stuff to you, they don't know what's going on. When I was arrested for Paiute Creek property because I would not commit criminal trespass and grand larceny as ordered by the judge, I went to jail. Any of you willing to commit criminal trespass and grand larceny because the judge told you to? Because I'd like to know. Well, you all think I'm lying? I'll show you the court documents. I'll show you everything. I was a trustee, I was not the owner of the property. Staff went in and changed the quick info at the tax assessor's office showing me as the primary owner and the trust as the secondary owner. And just for your information, it was the only one in the entire county that was put that way because nobody puts themselves up as the primary owner and the trust is the secondary. Nobody. And I was prosecuted by Washoe County, the Washoe County District Attorney and the judge as the owner of a property they knew I was the trustee for. And then I wouldn't go on to the property because it wasn't mine and I wouldn't remove property that wasn't mine. So they put me in jail for it. So if I wanna talk bad about staff, I damn well will. You have no right to tell me I can't. And you guys do nothing.
Thank you, Ms. Snedeker. All right, seeing no further public comment at this time, close the public comment, bring it back to the board. Is there any further Commissioners or Managers announcements at this time? Any Commissioner? All right, seeing no, no more of the, we'll close 32. We are adjourned. Thank you very much.